The regular meeting for Daily City Council, Monday, October 24th, 2022. Thank you for everyone that's attending. This is a very, very packed house. I don't think I've seen this many people in the chambers in quite a while. But knowing that we have a lot of things on our agenda, let's get the party started. To attend in person, you all are here. To attend virtually, come on onto https://bit.ly/dailycityoct24zoom, or you could watch on YouTube on our Daily City channel, or you could go on to our Daily City website at www.dailycity.org/agendas. So let's go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Are we ready? Ms. City Clerk, we can go roll call, please.
Present.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Mr. Victoria Vitoria.
Present.
Present.
Present. So we have a few presentations today, and our first presentation is with the Art and Lit Fest at Daily City Youth Poet and the Daily City Youth Poet Laureate, Eileen Castaneda, 2019 through 2022 San Mateo County Poet Laureate, and Victoria Magbala, the DCPLA Executive Director.
Good evening, Mayor Daws Mabula, honorable council members and community members. We are here to invite you all to the first ever DCPLA Art and Lit Fest on Saturday, November 5th, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Ceremonial Mall. This is a family-friendly event that will feature readings, live music, and a community mural activity by nationally-recognized artists, author, and Daily City native Bren Bataclan.
Sure, we will also feature our favorite film, Lumpia with a Vengeance, a panel discussion by them, as well as artists and vendors. We tried to especially feature Daily City natives or either people who live here now or had some sort of tie to Daily City. We did open it to anyone, though, but would priority to Daily City people because we're trying to provide a platform for Daily City artists.
Yeah, that's great.
And DCPLA has also announced its search for the next Daily City Youth Poet Laureate. This program has encouraged civic engagement and uplifted youth voices since it was launched in 2020 under the leadership of Victoria Magbala. Middle and high school students between the ages 13 and 18 who live or attend school in Daily City are invited to apply. More information can be found in our website. The current Youth Poet Laureate, Chloe Chow, has been successfully representing the city in various events around the Bay Area, including Thrive's Racial Justice Summit. Chloe will also host a workshop and book talk at the Art and Lit Fest. So we hope that you will continue supporting the Youth Poet Laureate Program and that you will all be there in support of Lit Fest and invite everyone to come. Let's go out there in force and show everyone that Daily City is about community, cultural power, and building better.
Wow.
And I'd like to throw in one more thing is that our wonderful San Mateo County Poet Laureate Emeritus, Eileen, is also hosting along with our current Daily City Youth Poet Laureate, Chloe Chow, an optional free online two-day workshop. So if there's any students out there who are like, wow, I'd really love to do this position, but I'm not sure my poetry is at that point yet. This is a great opportunity, even if they didn't want to apply, but to have a free workshop with this esteemed person that we also, you know, respect. And to mention that some of the big perks of becoming the Daily City Youth Poet Laureate is not only the position of being a youth advocate and going to cultural events and representing Daily City, but also we offer a $5,000 honorarium for the position. And that is a position, the prize is like, is for the work done. We are expecting them to live locally and represent us over their term. This time is May 2023 through May 2024. And also, it looks great on college applications. So I hope that everyone here will encourage any teens that they know to apply because our very first Daily City Youth Poet Laureate actually hadn't written poetry until she applied for this, and she ended up being amazing. Thank you all so much for having us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Before you go, Victoria, Eileen, we have quick questions and some comments real fast. Sorry about that. It's rewinding tape here.
So could you tell us a little bit more so that the community knows how one goes about applying and what is the process? Do they have to audition? What kind of requirements do you have in order to get that coveted position?
So we have an online application on our website at dcpla.org. And there is, that is an important thing to mention, actually, is the applicants are weighed as heavily on their civic engagement as on their poetry. So it's not enough to just be a poet or a community activist. You really have to be both because we're looking, that's what we're looking for, is somebody who has shown a dedication to civic engagement as well as artistic endeavors. So there's an application where they can list basically their resume of achievements. And then in addition, they are asked to submit five original works. And we will have a panel of five to seven judges from throughout the community. Our current mayor was nice enough to be one of our judges last year, among other community members. And the rubric for the judging is provided by Urban Word, who is the creator of the National Youth Poet Laureate Program.
Yes, and they automatically become part of this network of youth poets laureate that was originally led by Amanda Gorman.
And to also add one more thing, not to take up too much time, but even our applicants who didn't actually become the poet laureate or even the first runner-up have benefited from the mentorship that Ms. Eileen has provided to them, participating in many poetry events all around. So even just participating at all can be a great benefit to the student.
Thank you.
Thank you both so much, Eileen and Victoria, for the amazing work. The Youth Poet Laureate Program has just been phenomenal. Seeing all of the young people that have come through that program, and now look at you having an amazing event at Ceremonial. Like highlighting really the local artists in our community is phenomenal. And we look forward to that because with you as our mentor, they're really able to grow and be able to express. And they're coming from all over the schools in Daily City or residents in Daily City. And so when you brought forth this program, Victoria, it's amazing to see how it's blossomed and has grown. And for the young people out there, apply, it's amazing. I mean, they even provide a stipend or scholarship that you can use. And so we look forward to seeing the new poet laureate come through and thank the one that has proceeded. Look forward to hearing many more events DCPLA has done. Not only do you give to our libraries, but you also provide a space, a safe space for youth, young people, and also adults to be able to share their craft. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, you can't go anywhere. First, I'd like to say, Eileen and Victoria, you two never stop. It was a perfect pairing. And I know you're the county poet laureate, but we always thought about you as connected to Daily City. I know the other cities too, but I think there's a special connection. When you first got here, I remember when you went to the library and when you walked in, you had all your poets there, and Victoria was there as well. And that was just right in the beginning. And it was a special connection that we had with you. And it was just so meant to be, that this perfect coming together with the literature and the love and the passion that you guys continue together. And to give back to the youth, and the youth, as you said, some of them had never even explored even writing poetry. So it inspired them to even do that. And for you to give a workshop, as Victoria alluded to, and then bring this forth to the community is such a great opportunity that I think that we don't even know, especially since COVID, that people don't know really what they have until we tap into it. Because I know that arts, literature is an expression. It's an expression of love. It's an expression of who they are. It's an expression of things they've gone through. And the youth need some kind of way to get that out. And I think this is a perfect marriage with our DCPLA and with Eileen, who never stops, who I see your husband as well, who never stops. And appreciate everything, looking forward to it. And I'm sure the community, you might have run out of space at Ceremonial. That would be phenomenal. So for all the youth, the parents, let's get it going. And we know what we can do in Daily City and how much our youth have. And this is just touching what they have. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, ladies. Ms. Castaneto, when I saw you first walk up, I said, I'm trying to place where I remember you. And congratulations on becoming the San Mateo County Poet Laureate, and it's a pleasure to see you in person. Ms. Magbala, I was listening to your speech, and two things stood out to me. And number one is I think of the word "objective" and "subjective." Objective refers to facts that can be verified, whereas subjective is subject to feeling, opinions, and biasness. And to address that, to make sure it's a fair process, you said another magic word to me, which is "rubric." And for those in the audience who don't know what "rubric" is, basically, it's a table that indicates what good looks like. And so when you're grading and going through the process, you know, generally it's on a scale of one to five, but generally, if you meet the certain criteria, you get a certain grade, and that's how you determine. And the other issue that you mentioned was your college application. If you are a winner, it looks good on your college application. But if you don't win, the mere fact that you applied looks good on your application. So thank you for that. It was an eye-opening indication to me how great a program can be and what it does. So thank you so much, both of you. Thank you.
And before you all go, I just want to say thank you again for the many opportunities that you've given young people throughout the city and also opportunities for me to come out and show my poetry I haven't done in decades. And I'm a really true believer in writing in terms of, I had a poetry piece that I shared with you all that was called "From Poetry to Policymaker." And I always use this, I've used this quote in a lot of my research, and it's "Language is the house of being." And with the many words that you can feel with, that you can identify with, that you can express with, the better grasp of reality and expression that you have in understanding the world and a sense of empathy that people can have with each other. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'll see you on November 5th. Y'all should just come every meeting and applause. Number two, we have San Mateo County Shared Micromobility Feasibility Study and Implementation Plan by Kim Weaver from CCAG.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. I'm Kim Weaver, Transportation Program Specialist for CCAG, or the City-County Association of Governments of San Mateo County, which is the congestion management agency for the county. Thank you for the opportunity to present the San Mateo County Shared Micromobility Feasibility Study and Implementation Plan. Next slide. Kind of works. Okay, there you go. Okay, let's start with just a little background on what shared micromobility is. It's a network of shared vehicles. They're a quick and convenient option for short, one-way trips, usually about 15 to 45 minutes or about two miles or less. It benefits those who don't own their own vehicle or their own device or vehicle and can also solve the first-last-mile challenge to get people to and from transit. It can also include e-bikes and e-scooters that give an electric assist to help new and even experienced bike riders get around more easily. Next slide. To use shared micromobility, you typically sign up using a phone or a credit card. After one signs up, you check out the device, ride it to your destination, lock it, and then end your trip. There are also options for those who are unbanked. For example, the Bay Wheels in San Francisco and Oakland, you can load some cash into your Clipper card and then use your Clipper card to check out a bike or scooter. So a little bit about the project. Micromobility was a recommended program, and the CCAG Board adopted 2021 San Mateo County Bike and Pedestrian Plan. The study began with analysis, with that evaluates the feasibility of the program. We developed the program vision, goals, and metrics, as well as did a review of best practices that are relevant to San Mateo County. The team then developed a program recommendations and a draft plan based on those deliverables. And as well as feedback, we had an ad hoc advisory group, the CCAG committees, and the board. Next slide. So this slide is just the summary of the feasibility analysis. For each feasibility factor, the team noted whether the analysis leads to high, medium, or low feasibility. In the end, the micromobility program is feasible in San Mateo County since there is a high demand serving destinations in the county. Although there is some mitigations that are going to be required to address physical barriers, equity is also high. The analysis identified areas where investment in transportation opportunities can support equity populations. And finally, we also looked at management capability, vendor availability, and funding capacity, which was also medium to high for such a program in the county. Next slide. So the team has recommended a multi-jurisdictional program with a single program manager responsible for procurement and contract management. The proposed recommendations for the program are to establish a governance committee composed of participating jurisdictions, the program manager, and any other stakeholders as needed. This body would be a venue to discuss program issues, share lessons learned, and resolve problems. The governance committee will also use the plan's proposed program guidelines framework to develop an RFP for the vendor, or Request for Proposals for those. Too many acronyms. It is recommended to start with a one- to two-year pilot phase to test out this structured, multi-jurisdictional program, evaluate performance, and identify ways to fine-tune program elements, such as user fees, service area, and parking strategy. The recommended vehicle type is e-bicycles, but there is an option to include manual bikes and/or e-scooters as determined by individual jurisdictions. This program structure is recommended because it will reduce the degree of commitment by jurisdictions and the program manager and will hopefully conclude with our recommendations for a permanent program approach. Next slide. The study identified three agencies that have the ability to play the role of the program manager. The three were CCAG, SAM Trans, and the County of San Mateo. Although all three agencies have the technical capacity, the team is recommending CCAG to lead the program, given the agency's county-wide program scope, proven ability to build conciseness across jurisdictional boundaries, general support from the CCAG Board on the project concept, as well as the program's ability to reduce vehicle miles traveled. And next slide. So the team used the following criteria to determine the potential pilot locations. So first was the equity-focused areas that are consistent with the methodology used in the 2021 CCAG-San Mateo County Comprehensive Bike and Ped Plan. Proximity to transit, so that includes commuter rails like Caltrain and BART, as well as high-frequency buses that have a 15-minute headway. We also looked at proximity to barriers, which was taken from the feasibility analysis, which included road level of traffic stress, clusters of automobile-focused businesses, railways, highways, and slopes greater than 10%. And lastly, we looked at demand, which included where people live, where people work, where people shop, where people attend higher education, where people can ride transit, and where people visit, which included tourist destinations and accommodation services such as hotels and motels. Next slide. So the map on your right is the result of the criteria from the previous slide. The areas that are showing up the highest concentration are the red color, which represents high likelihood of success. The team identified five potential service areas location. They are listed in no particular order. The original recommendation was to select one of the five pilot sites to launch a program. But after discussion with the project team, the revised recommendation is for the pilot to take place in Daily City-Broadmore-Koma area, as well as Redwood City and North Fair Oaks. This refinement enables the team to examine potential demand in both northern and southern part of the county. Next slide. So this map shows the most anticipated demand areas for Daily City, Koma, and Broadmore area. The little highlighted blue hexagons are the recommended vehicle deployment areas. These locations represent areas of forecasted demand. And as the pilot takes place, the governance committee and the selected operator will be able to modify the areas based on real-world data. Although the vehicles will be deployed in these certain locations, users can ride within the jurisdictions. Next slide. So after the conclusion of the Phase One pilot, CCAG Board and the Governance Committee can determine what are the appropriate next steps using the available data based on factors such as ridership, funding, infrastructure, new indicators of demand, and political will and agency capacity. The program may expand beyond the initial pilot program service area. The consultant team has identified a number of locations that can go into the future phase of the project. They included the other three to four pilot locations from Phase One, as well as any adjacent jurisdictions, and also any high scoring from the map in the red area, which includes the East Palo Alto Menlo Park, San Mateo-Foster City area, and the San Bruno-Milbury and South San Francisco area. Next slide. So the public cost of creating a micromobility program will vary based on the program's business model. To help illustrate this variability, the study team developed costs for four scenarios. So no action is the current status quo of having individual jurisdictions manage their own program. Second is a regional program oversight and contract management. Third is a subsidized system. And fourth is a fully publicly-owned system. While the four scenarios presented provide context to micromobility costs and revenues, the study team recommends San Mateo County implement one of the two scenarios. So it's highlighted in the yellow box. So two, the regional program oversight and contract management. And three, a subsidized system. For every scenario, the annual pilot program costs are estimated, assuming the system will have one full-time employee to manage contract and program oversight, a maximum of 500 vehicles per pilot service area, and limited infrastructure for parking location and hubs. The third one, the subsidized system, includes a subsidy of approximately $100,000. This will support and maybe negotiate with operator if we can get some equity pricing program, a cap on user fees, or other geography operating requirements. In addition to operating in capital costs, the team estimated an expenditure of $50,000 per year to evaluate the pilot phase. The capital costs and the amount of subsidy may vary depending on the number of participating jurisdictions. These pilot program costs are still preliminary. The costs will be refined after the vendor procurement is complete and cost proposals are received. CCAG, as the program manager, will actively seek funding for the program. However, if the program costs exceed available funding, CCAG will work with the participating jurisdictions to determine appropriate next steps. Next slide. So this table is a draft timeline of the program once the implementation plan is approved. It includes the establishing of the governance committee, then the procurement process to select the operator, and then launching the Phase One pilot phase. Staff hopes to launch the program in 2024. Next slide. So the draft feasibility and implementation plan was released early this month, and includes an executive summary, some existing conditions, the proposed vision and goals, the best practices that we reviewed, the more full recommendations that I shared with you today, as well as the program guidelines frameworks that includes the rules and regulations for the vendor, and then any next steps. Next slide. For the upcoming steps, the draft plan commit period ends on November 7th. Staff is currently presenting to city councils like today the recommended pilot locations. And then the final plan will be presented to the CCAG Board in December for adoption. Next slide. Thank you for your time. I will now take any questions or comments. And also, Kaki Chung, Program Manager of CCAG, is also here to answer any questions.
All right, I'd like to open up to colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wonderful presentation on this. I think that it's so important to ensure that there is access to mobility, especially around electronic bikes. And to see that CCAG is looking at a comprehensive way to include that within the footprint of cities and municipalities is so important. I mean, you answered my question. My question was going to be about cost. And so I'm hearing from you that the pilot will be covered through CCAG. But further down the line, as you assess the need, then eventually would the cost go back to the cities, is my question. Would there be a formula created, you know, to subsidize it from each city? I'm curious. I know you're early in the planning stages. I'm kind of, I look at, you know, I use my MPA hat, and I kind of look at the implementation as a whole and where all these pieces are. And so just wondering if that was something that you all had thought about down the line.
Yes, definitely. So for the pilot phase, one thing is to not only make sure the program is fine-tuned, but figure out how to continue the program. So CCAG will be the one looking for funding, such as grants. But there is a possibility to get, we will need to come back to city councils and figure out if there is a fee from these jurisdictions. I know others have like development fees. We could add it to doing a TDM strategy as well. So we'll definitely be looking at other possibilities.
Okay, great. Thank you. So for now, the pilot is no cost to the city?
As of right now.
Okay.
We're hoping that whatever proposals we get from the vendor will be our estimates. But if it goes a little bit more, because we do want to make this program affordable for our residents.
Yeah, that's wonderful. I can see it being utilized right by Daily City BART or those areas where there's an elevated hill that we all know, such as Top of the Hill, and in those arenas. And so wonderful work. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation at CCAG the other night. And it's wonderful that you came here so fast. I was so excited to hear that we're going to be doing this with Broadmore and the connectivity and the equity lens that you guys used when you did your studies. And I know that there were a lot of questions that we asked you. But since this is at the pilot stage, and I know that CCAG is very active in looking at grants, and to start something like this, and then to include probably manual as well, and so we can make it affordable for some people to access e-bikes. I know we were discussing that as well at our meeting. So I know as we roll along, but this is a really exciting time and well-needed and well-thought-out. And you guys did extensive studies. And so proud of the board members, proud of all of you to even doing all this and doing it with your equity lens. It's always been CCAG's motto, which I love with Davina's leadership as well. And so looking forward to it and connecting with Broadmore and Koma and get to be the first pilot program is exciting. And I love being part of CCAG. And so thank you. Exciting to be here and see you in person. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Hello, Ms. Weaver. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. I think this was a long time coming. And I just had a few comments I'd like to make, and actually, a couple of questions. I'm impressed with the use of e-bikes because not only that, it also cuts down on greenhouse gases, which I think is very important for our environment. The pilot program, one of your slides you indicate transit barriers and demand. And I must say, I looked at your maps, and I'm kind of moving towards underserved communities to which we have them in Daly City. But yet, on your maps, I did not see it indicated in the red zone as one of our underserved communities, which is close to Caltrans. And I think we need to, we say equity, we want to be sure that we include our underserved communities in Daly City. If we can bring up a map.
Yeah, okay.
That was great, because Ms. Weaver was like, oh, can you bring up the map?
Yeah, I want to know where, I want to know what area we're missing.
Exactly. Right there, that's good. One of our biggest underserved communities is at the top right, to the north of Brisbane. And it's called our Bayshore District. And I'm concerned because the map seems to be cut off. I didn't know if that was included in that. And that's one of our biggest underserved communities there. I'm also wondering about any subsidies. You had alluded to it, but subsidies, besides, I don't know, I'd probably give it a try as a senior to ride an e-bike. But I'm just wondering if we have any subsidy program for those who can't afford these units. Another one of your slides, you indicated $2,500 per vehicle. That threw me off for a minute because I'm saying, where can you buy a vehicle for $2,500, especially electric? But you probably were referring to units, which are the e-bikes. So I think that might tend to lead to a little bit of confusion if you say vehicles. You made mention about jurisdiction and riding to another jurisdiction. So if we start this program, say, in the Broadmoor area, can someone ride from Broadmoor to San Bruno?
Not during the pilot phase.
Okay, specifically, not during the pilot phase. How about within intercity? So if somebody picked up a unit and rode from Broadmoor to the Bayshore area?
That's fine, yes.
Oh, that's fine. Now, that's a long distance. And we thought about this before. And the concern that we have is the drop-off point and how we're going to manage picking these units up and get them back out, not unless there's someone in another area who wants to rent, and hopefully they'll come back. So just a thought. Your time was very limited, and I'm sure these are specifics that you could probably go more further into it. But that's okay. Subsidies, vehicles, jurisdiction, map, pilot, greenhouse. I think I got it all. I thank you very much for your presentation, and we're actually looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, yeah. I don't know if you wanted me to answer your questions, or you're okay?
Oh, I'm okay. I'm hoping that you would take it back to the committee and say, hey, these questions came up. What about this? What about this? But my concern, when we talk about equity, equity also includes underserved communities. And not only here in Daly City do we have them, but we have them throughout San Mateo County, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is that clear?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. I thought it was really well done. You had mentioned that you, one of the reasons Daly City was selected because you thought it would have a high degree of success. Can you tell me a little bit more why you think this would be successful here?
Yeah, so the main reason C-CAG wanted it, so we have those four, so equity, demand, coast-to-transit, and minimize barriers. Those were the four top criteria. But when we were selecting out of those five, we wanted a place that had a lot, not just demand, but could actually do a successful equity program. So I'm glad that Councilmember Sylvester mentioned that because we definitely want to test a really good equity program because we do want to make this program affordable to our residents.
And if you could just walk me through what it takes in terms of, let's say, getting an e-bike and the costs associated with that. And I think you mentioned that you needed a credit card. But to those who are not able to access credit cards or hub credit, how were they able to share in this experience?
Yeah, so we've explored some best practices. So like Baywheels, they can add cash to their Clipper card, and then their Clipper card can you use to check out the micro mobility vehicles. I know other places you can even load it and get a code, like just pay cash and get a code from libraries or 7-Elevens or CVSs as well. And that's definitely going to be a requirement for the vendor or operator that wants to come to San Mateo County. They need to propose an equity program for those that are unbanked.
And what is the market now in terms of renting an electric bike? How much does that cost if you were to do it now?
Right now, I know some of them, it's like a dollar or two to just unlock the vehicle. And then it's about like 25 cents every 15. It varies. So we'll definitely need to look at and negotiate user fees as well with them.
And then when someone does, let's say, rent a bike, is that something they take home? Or how is that taken care of?
So our recommendation is to actually have a hybrid system. So because it's a pilot, we don't know, we want to do dock stations and invest tons of capital in building a station. So it's going to be a dockless, but not free-for-all. We want hubs or bike racks or like a sticker or something to say you could only park your scooter and bike in these locations. And we, like he's mentioned, we are deaf, one of our recommendations to the operator is definitely having good rebalancing. And it's the operator will be in charge of moving the vehicles in illegal areas. And if they don't, then we can find them or impound.
So how does a vendor keep track of the bikes?
So all the vehicles have a GPS. And so that's very good new technology that I know because everyone has been kind of in the past had issues with these bikes just showing up at their house or their places you don't want them to be. And it would take them forever to get them back. But now there is GPS and geo-fencing. So we could even tell them that these bikes and scooters can't even go in this park. Like, they can't be there. And the scooter and bike will like slowly slow down and stop you. So that's another reason why, like, you can't get it to San Bruno right now because the bike will literally stop. It won't work.
And do you know of any funding mechanisms that will allow for people to just use the bike without having to be bored?
I think there's programs that we could also talk about equity passes. I know that the Baywheels is like $5 for a whole year for those that are on like CalFresh or CalGrants or something like that. And then after one year, it's $5 a month for unlimited rides. So we'll definitely need to look into that as well, too, how successful their lessons learned from them and how we can implement it here in the county.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. I just have one quick question, or quick question slash comment is, are y'all willing to work alongside other commissions? I know, you know, Councilmember Sylvester talked about being a clean alternative. I would say, like, is there, like, can there be crossover with Peninsula Clean Energy along with C-CAG? In terms of, like, I guess subsidizing, if we begin to institutionalize this program?
Yes, we definitely, we definitely support partnerships. Part of the program guidelines, because I know a lot of people are concerned about helmets. So we would like the operator to work with some nonprofits or Silicon Valley Bike Local Coalition to like set up education events and giveaways for the helmets as well. So I think any partnerships with Peninsula Clean Energy because they are doing an e-bike rebate program would be great synergies.
Great, okay. Well, this has a lot of potential. I'm looking forward to seeing this in our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one more comment. Go ahead.
Ms. Weaver, I'll make this quick. According to the presentation, I believe you were here with someone else from C-CAG?
Oh, yeah, Program Director Kaki Chung.
Great, I just wanted to say outstanding presentation. It sounds very exciting, and we can't wait. So I wanted to give you both credit. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Proceeding to item number three, we have a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we have Junior Flores, who's the president of Alice Kumares and Kumpares. So before Junior comes up, I want to read this proclamation. So Domestic Violence Awareness Month is October, is in October. So whereas the city of Daly City recognizes and participates in public awareness to support national domestic violence awareness, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance victims. And whereas, on average, 24 people per minute are victims of rape, physical violence, or stalking by an intimate partner in the United States, which totals 12 million women and men over the course of a year. And whereas, the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and are sustained by societal difference. And whereas, the crimes of domestic violence violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas, oftentimes, the victims of domestic violence are children who can have lifelong repercussions from the emotional or physical trauma of being exposed to domestic violence. And whereas, domestic violence survivors and their advocates have rallied to the cause of victim justice. Now therefore, I, Roderick Dos Magbuwal, Mayor, and the members of the city council hereby proclaim October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Daly City, and encourage the Daly City community to stand together against domestic violence to offer support and understand this to survivors and to participate in domestic violence awareness activities. So I'll hand it over to you.
Good evening. My name is Anastasia Flores, Jr. On behalf of my fellow 2022 officers of Alice, Alliance for Community Empowerment, Vice President Flor Nicholas, Secretary Jennifer Jimenez Wong, our survivors and allies. We would like to thank Mayor Rod Dos Magbuwal, Vice Mayor Benno Ventura, and Councilmembers Glenn Sylvester, Justin Manalo, and Pam Di Giovanni, for this proclamation to highlight the significance of domestic violence awareness and for bringing to light a topic often considered a taboo for discussion in our community. Daly City has been a founding partner of Alice along with neighboring Colma in South San Francisco. Your consistent support for our mission has helped give hope and save lives through our free education events. In fact, just this May, Mayor and Skyline Professor Rod Dos Magbuwal hosted our first-ever presentation at a college class. We are deeply grateful to Mayor Professor Rod for the opportunity to discuss the root causes in various forms of abuse, the ways to help those in abusive relationships with the millennial generation. Students heard first-person testimony of a survivor who shared her road to healing and empowerment thanks to caring community members who listened without judging, believed, and gave her crucial information on resources. Abuse is a learned behavior that worsens over time. It happens everywhere between intimate partners, families, friends, coworkers, even strangers. When an individual believes they are entitled to dominate another and acts on it through verbal, emotional, psychological, financial, and physical attacks, that's abuse. Understanding the issue is the first step towards ending it. That's why education is extremely important. That is the heart of our work as Alice Kumares and Kumpares. We have been at the forefront of educating and raising awareness of domestic and family violence in the Filipino community for 19 years. As we near our 20th year in 2023, we acknowledge the diverse partnerships and relationships cultivated by our founder, Executive Director Sharie Corral Moreno, and founding President Bettina Yap and core members. And we look forward to nurturing our relationships, keeping our bond healthy and strong. We are excited to see you all at our first in-person education presentation and resource fair before the end of the year. So stay tuned. May I add that this month marks the sixth anniversary of the passing of our honorary Chair, Alice Gulos, after whom we name our nonprofit organization. Her dedication to community service and collaboration continues to light our way. We humbly accept this proclamation in her honor and ask you to keep her and survivors of abuse in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you very much.
Right there. I would like to open it up to...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say how important your organization really is. You have done, your group, your organization, your board, your members have done so much to highlight and put at the forefront the issue of domestic violence. And you do it in a way that is really meaningful and impactful in your events. The stories of the victims that have suffered from domestic violence is especially compelling. And every time I hear and see the presentations you make, it just sends chills down my bones. And it's because the stories are real, and they, you cannot help but feel a certain connection and emotion and empathy and sadness for the courage that they had to tell their stories out in public to tell their stories out in public for everyone to hear and see. And I, and I think that kind of presentation really drives home the point that you're making. And I, I, I cannot ever thank you enough for bringing this issue forward, for never stopping, and for giving the victims of domestic violence a platform to, to, to have their say and let people know their story. So thank you very much for all you do.
Glad you could.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for the tremendous work you all do in the community. From education to giving individuals the opportunity to speak up against violence and to give them the tools and a safety net in their communities. We know that it, it's not easy for those to come out and speak out of, about violence because it's very traumatic. And what you all provide for the community for many decades is something so special. So from the bottom of my, my heart, thank you for the continued advocacy that you do for victims of domestic violence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Mr. Flores, after attending many of your events and even listening to, which we all know, Council Member and former Mayor of, of Colma, who always gives her heart, and each time she tells her story, it never escapes me that we need to remember that it happens to everyone. And I think you guys bring a great reminder, whether at Matter de la Rosa or wherever you do your presentations with the role playing, how impactful the crossroads of whether it doesn't matter, women, men, or whomever. And you let them know it's shameless. You know, you take away the shame and let them feel comfortable and let them know that the resources are there. I just had spoken this morning to Lydia de Guzman, and we were discussing the fact that we were hoping that, now that you announced it, we don't know when, the in-person. Because in-person, where people can connect to the resources and that you guys have Kaiser Permanente, you have everyone coming to the table because you want to help the community. And there are people that we speak with, people that know that they, they can come to you confidentially. And I know that as a few years ago, we brought back our friend to join us. There was a few people that came back to, it never escapes that Alice Gulos, who was the founder and Cherie, I mean, the Kumares, Kumpares, it's pretty impactful. And it already has helped many people in our community and beyond. And even though we may not know their names, it's those that come forward and tell their testimonies that it is impactful and that they, when they're willing to share like the human trafficking stories or what have, have you. So looking forward to the in-person and letting people know, it's okay. There is a place to go. There is a place for you. And especially culturally or however, because especially in cultures, they don't know, right? You don't know what you don't know. And then you always open your arms, even if we have, in a loving way. So I think that education, and I thank the mayor for giving the millennials, because they, we don't know how they're suffering at home as well, and they may have stories to tell that impact them and they impact them within their parents or what, how to recognize it. I think from myself of working on anti-human trafficking for many years with SF Cat, I think that one of the biggest things I learned is how to recognize it. Because people are in it, but they don't know how to recognize it. They don't know what to do. But now it's expanded with the mental health as well, with the support. So looking forward to in-person. Thank you for your work. Thank you. I see you out there and I know where the heart is. Flor Nicholas, our Vice Mayor of South City, all heart, everybody on your board. So thank you very much and we'll be there. I will be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Flores, congratulations on becoming president of a great organization. I've been involved with the organization for quite some time, even during my law enforcement career. And as I think back the years prior to that date of clear tampoco, to which I think was the impetus to cause awareness and to let other folks know that domestic violence is an issue. I was taught about the circle of violence, how it could consist of different parts, whether you take the checkbook or take the money away, where you keep folks at home, and there's a circle that transpires. As being president of Fileo at the present, at that time, I recall we used to travel to the Philippines. And back in 1999, when we tried to introduce best practices for the Philippine National Police, they were against it. And basically, what we got back from them was, it's none, it's none of their business. Because of your organization, it has brought a change to most law enforcement, and I want to put that out there. Being a part of your organization, and when I would go out on the street and do my job, I say, any calls of domestic violence, somebody's going to jail. We used to do dispute mediation, where you try to talk it out, and that has completely changed. So thank you for the work that you continue to do. Keep up the great work. As one of my colleagues, police officer, he was the former president of Kumares Kumpares, Mr. Randy Katuari. So keep it up. Thank you so much. We are very proud to provide a proclamation to the organization. Thank you so much.
And before you go, I just want to give a quick shout out to Cherie out there on.
Where is she?
In Zoom land.
Okay.
Virtual world. I reached out to her last semester because I think that when we talk about what you said, Council Member Sylvester, of breaking the cycle of violence, there was a quote that a social worker told me and it stuck in my brain. And that person said, hurt people, hurt people. And one thing that I learned from that our discussion was how we have this long, if a person is hurt, they could have this long relationship of violence. It reminds me of Tupac's thug life. They hate you, give little infants, F's everyone. And when that happens, we have a society where we are going to be violent. And within our culture, we have this culture of hiya. And hiya is shame. And like what Council Member Sylvester was saying, you know, it's not in our business, but it is our business. You know, so I'm glad that we're making these generational steps for healing so that the next generation can see the humanity in people's sense of love and how they love and how they care for one another. And it's really, really important that we have these conversations at home. Because I know in our culture, in many cultures, it's one of the hardest, most difficult things to stare at, at your face. We may, we may, we could say it, but the hardest thing is to put it out there. And I think your organization finds a way to bridge that gap, and I just want to say thank you. So I'm going to go down there, do some pictures, some, with the, end of the proclamation. Put it there. All right. Proceeding to the next proclamation. Item number four is a proclamation on National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I'll just go ahead and read it and we'll proceed. National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2022. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to raise awareness about the impact of breast cancer in women and men, and honor those who have lost their battle to this terrible disease. And whereas breast cancer is the second most common cancer affecting women, it is estimated one in eight million will develop breast cancer over the course of their lifetime, and 281,550 women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in the United States in 2021. And whereas early detection is one of the most important strategies for treating breast cancer successfully, and regular screenings are the most reliable way to detect it early. There is renewed energy focusing on getting women to do the, the recommended screening schedule before a cancer has spread and become less treatable. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has disrupted many parts of our lives and has produced new deficits in breast cancer early detection, it is important to maintain scheduled screenings, doctor appointments, and treatments without delay while observing coronavirus safety measures. And whereas we applaud the advocates, medical professionals, researchers, and caregivers who dedicate their lives to making progress towards cures. And whereas we stand in solidarity with breast cancer survivors across the country. And whereas the pink ribbon has become the universal symbol of breast cancer, illustrating the cause, raising awareness, and bringing together women in solidarity. By wearing a simple piece of ribbon affixed with a pin, we are able to show our support for breast cancer awareness. And now therefore, I, Roderick Dos Magbuwal, Mayor, and the members of the City of, City Council hereby proclaim October 2022 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Daly City and urge all citizens to rise, rise to the occasion of becoming involved with breast cancer awareness by learning the warning signs and what steps to take in order to help prevent fatalities related to breast cancer. Signed and sealed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Daly City, this 21st day of October 2022. And with that, I'd like to open it up to Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to say thank you for putting this proclamation this evening. It is so important for all women to get annual checkups. I, I want to honor my mother, Josie, who survived breast cancer. And, and it's so important for each and every one of us women to get screened and the importance of that, and to all of the healthcare workers who give so much to the community, especially during times of treatment and uncertainty, your compassion is truly admired. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I also want to thank you for bringing this awareness and to let people know that our Daly City Police are proudly wearing the pink patches. And the money goes to the Susan Coleman Foundation for more research. Because the more research you have, as many of us have experienced and Council Members, there are someone in your life, whether it's your family member or yourself, either you've, they've been able to survive it, or they're now a personal angel of ours, or maybe someone in the future has touched all of us, I think, than more than what we think. And that this money, 100% of it goes to the research and are available at our Daly City Police front desk. And they'll be available during the end of the month. And other cities are doing it as well. But we would appreciate the support because the research is going on for early detection. And early detection is key. And it's the way we fight this battle. And because it metastasizes so quickly sometimes that we don't get to know that until it's already started metastasizing. So I say to all of you, is what we can do to be preventative and, in our lives, and securing of one another and try to eliminate a little stress. I know that's easy for us to say, but it actually does make cancer cells grow. So, so I know that's easy to say after COVID and other things, but, and things we're going through economically. But our officers are proudly wearing it, and I think all of us together can fight this battle of breast cancer. And I want to bring the awareness that men also get breast cancer. And I have known a few. So we need to keep awareness of that as well. So thank you for putting it forward. And again, they're available at our desk with our Daly City Police. Thank you very much. Thank you. It really means a lot.
Thank you so much. Is it Acting Chief Christensen here? I saw him earlier.
With a pink patch.
Where is he?
His pink patch.
Is he hiding?
No.
Right over there.
Oh, there he is, way up there on the top. All right. The date was October 12, 2022, when Acting Chief Christensen stood here in front of us, and I noticed he had the pink patch on, and that's when I made an announcement. And you know, as I come walking into council chambers today, our interim city manager whispered in my ear, and he says, nice tie. And then I look over at his tie, he has a pink tie. Did you all notice that? So we do understand the importance of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I know about the pin with the pink ribbon, but our police department, they don't wear a ribbon, but they do wear the patch. So if you see them out on the field, you just shake your head, yeah, breast cancer. Thank you so much, and feel free, they're available here. Thank you so much.
I just want to just mention about Breast Cancer Awareness Month as well. I had my auntie who passed away when I was, back in like 1997, she was like a second mom to me. Her name was Adora or Adoracion Magbuwal. And it was probably one of the first people that I ever seen go through something like that in my life. And she didn't survive. And to witness that and to see my cousins and his newly born child and seeing my little cousins go through was one of the most hardest things to ever go through. And if you can, I know when we talk about cancer, it's a very holistic thing about, again, managing stress and managing so many parts of, of your, of your wellness. And so, you know, I think as far as, as a city, doing this proclamation to talk about Breast Cancer Awareness Month is to understand the importance of getting screened, understanding wellness as a whole. And, you know, the, one way to address these issues is to work as a community. And my issue is your issue, and we have to be in solidarity with that. So moving along to, to the next agenda item, can I get a motion to, or next thing is approval of agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Glenn Sylvester, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have public appearances and oral communications. And we have a handful today, so let me go ahead and read this script real quick. All right, so now I'm opening up public comment. And let's see, this portion of the agenda is, is available for the public to address City Council on any issue that is not an agenda. And in accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular, regular meetings, the City Council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any items in this meeting. Members of the public joining in person who submitted a speaker card may come up to the podium one at a time when their name is called. Members of the public joining by Zoom may click the raise hand feature to speak, to request to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. When you hear your name, you will request to unmute your microphone. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If any additional speakers queue up after the last caller, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the City Council. All speakers will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask you that you wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance will have their mics muted. Okay. So first speaker is Wayne Lee.
Are we on?
I think so.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Wayne Lee. I'm president of the San Mateo County Asian Pacific Islander Caucus, made up of elected Asians, elected mayors and council members. We advocate for issues that regards Asian Pacific Islanders in the county, and like to thank the city for hosting our annual internship and showing what public service means to young people. So it's always been a successful program and it's, and most of it's done in, in different cities, but Daly City has been a big part of that. So thank you. Thank you to staff as well. We really appreciate all, what you've done and your support. Okay, and I'm here to read a letter concerning a, a issue that, that really was a misfortunate issue, but we need to, I was asked to read this. On behalf of the Board of Directors of the San Mateo County Asian Pacific Islander Caucus and the League of Cities, California Cities Asian Pacific Islander Caucus, our organizations are very concerned about the media reports of the incidents between Council Members Manalo and Di Giovanni, Di Giovanni, sorry about that, at City Hall this past month in Daly City. Our organizations take all incidents of hate speech, bullying, intimidation, and physical violence very seriously. We are taking incidents, the past incident very seriously, and we request that the steps be taken quickly to protect all elected leadership, city staff, appointed board and commission members, and the public in Daly City from any more impacts or physical harm associated with this incident. We suggest the following minimum immediate actions. One, ask that a thorough and complete investigation incident be completed in a transparent and timely manner by law enforcement and qualified outside legal counsel is retained if needed. Two, that the community be kept informed about the status of this investigation within the limitations of those involved and their rights to privacy. Three, the significant and appropriate actions be taken if there is finding a fault. Four, that the City of Daly City undergo analysis of measures that can be implemented in the future to avoid this type of violence whenever possible. And we're not, we're not saying that it was, it was deliberate. This Asian Pacific Islander community in San Mateo County has endured decades of abuse, ranging from abusive attacks to physical violence. All forms of abuse are unacceptable, and the increase of the past few years of incidents has been abhorrent. As elected officials, we need to work together to ensure that our communities are safe, are accepting of different views, and we set an example of how to work with each other with civility. There should be no tolerance for physical harm. Our organizations look Our organizations look forward to thorough investigation as substantial next steps are taken based upon the outcome of this investigation. Signed, Wayne Lee, President of the San Mateo County Asian Pacific Islander Caucus. And we thank you for the time and we hope and we look forward to the investigation and we hope that it all comes out for everybody's.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Aja Ragasa.
I'm here again today to speak on the character of Councilwoman Pam Di Giovanni. Upon hearing about the violence that Councilmember Manalo faced not too long ago, I decided to come forward about an altercation that I experienced with Councilmember Pam in 2016. I served on the Library Board of Trustees as a commissioner, and during the incident, I was the youngest serving commissioner in Daly City at the time. My interactions with Councilmember Di Giovanni have been largely negative, often filled with passive aggressive behavior and comments. At a political fundraiser for Jane Kim in 2016, Councilmember Di Giovanni stood next to me during a group picture. She was holding several heavy duty political signs in her hands. And during the photos, she repeatedly put the signs in front of me, blocking my face. She apologized but continued blocking me in pictures, blocking the camera's view of She invaded my personal space. After telling her to stop several times, she hit me in my jaw with a stack of signs, almost knocking me over. Additionally, as my duration as commissioner, she threatened me several times. One incident that stood out to me was when she pulled me to the side during a political event, saying, "You'll be a great leader when it's your time." Not only was the tone menacing, but she continued insinuating to me that I was unfit to serve in my position. These attacks from Councilmember Di Giovanni gave me so much fear and trauma and were detrimental to my emergence in Daly City politics as a young leader. I hope that in speaking out tonight, we can stop this cycle of violence and bring awareness to the behavior of Councilmember Di Giovanni, because what happened to Councilmember Manalo was not an isolated incident. This is not who we are as Daly City, and I think Councilmember Di Giovanni should resign. Thank you.
Thank you, Aja, for your comments. Next speaker is Anthony Yoshida.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few weeks ago, many Daly City residents from many different walks of life came here and spoke in this very spot about the concerns they had about the city and about their own lives. The majority of those concerns had to do with trust. Trust that they will be respected in the city regardless of their race or skin color. Trust that they could come to work without being harassed or intimidated. Trust that their city and their elected officials sworn to serve them will do their part to make the city safer and more welcoming. Since the last council meeting, no action has been taken to renew that trust between the city government and the people that live here. Councilmember Di Giovanni, this isn't personal, this is about trust. You have lost the trust of a large swath of constituents that you currently represent. Without trust, without the confidence of those who elected you, you have lost your mandate to represent Daly City. We implore you, if you truly love Daly City and the people who live here, give us time to heal. Step down and give the city a chance to become whole again. And if you are not to do that, city council, I urge you to take action to address these wrongs. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Next speaker is Brendan Sinclair.
My name is Brendan Sinclair, and I'm here to talk about the responsibility of our council members to set a positive example for the people that they represent. Specifically, I'm speaking about the Councilmember Di Giovanni's aggression towards Councilmember Manalo. When I heard about the incident of Ms. Di Giovanni slamming the door on Ms. Manalo, I was disheartened, especially considering that this was a continuation of previous hostilities. It's particularly frustrating for me to consider the implications of this aggressive act for one of our elected officials. Our leaders set the norms for the behaviors of the civilians. This has been true at the national level and it's reflected at the local level. Along that vein, I wonder what kind of example Councilmember Di Giovanni's actions set for young members of her community. As a public figure, I expect her to treat others with respect and compassion. After all, she is one of the most empowered members of this community, and the decisions she makes has significant impacts on the shape of the community. In a time of divisiveness, we need a unified city council with members prepared to fight for social welfare of their constituents. With Councilmember Di Giovanni attacking Councilmember Manalo, I believe that her focus lies more in a grudge than doing her service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan, for your comments. Next speaker is Mabel Tai.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Today, I would like to address a cannabis shop opening near Skyline Plaza. I have been a resident of Daly City for almost 14 years, and I can say, growing up, the teens at that time were not as crazy as today. This concerns me and many others because this is promoting drug uses to teenagers whose brains are still developing. As we all know, nicotine can cause an addiction that is hard to break, and it's especially hard to break when used at the, when used at the brain's development stage. The smell might entice teens to try it, and the very appealing colors of the store can catch eyes. Teens are smart these days. We have better technology and they can create fake IDs that can slide. This greatly concerns me as I've seen people smoke and vape at my middle school, Fernando Rivera and Westmore High School. These shops can also harm people with lung issues and elders who don't have people, sorry. These shops can also harm people with lung issues and elders who don't have very strong lungs. Daly City is filled with immigrants who moved here to give their children their better, a better life and their, and be their parents' hope. Hope is not drugs. Hope is not destroying young adults' lives. Hope is not damaging your body. I hope my voice changes your minds about the cannabis shop opening in that location. Thank you.
Next up, we have Dori Panisa.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and city council members. The reason I'm here, because I'm part of the community leader in Daly City, but not only there, also in South River, San Mateo County. I was concerned about, I'm a businesswoman also, especially taking care with the elders. I have always a problem because the community, some of the community citizens telling me about the problem with the parking in Plaza, in Daly City, around in Manila Oriental. I, the reason I use that Manila Oriental because of the price, the type of the food there, it's very fresh, and not only that, but also in the restaurant there. So, I need to, I need your help, how to solve that problem there, because I know this is a business. We helping each other, but the problem is, there always a problem there, especially like we're taking with the elders. They say that also the other side is also taking with the seniors. But please be fair for the parking. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, please. Ms. Panisa?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for providing a comment. I think you wanted to speak to a particular item. I think it's item number 16.
Yes, sir.
Right, so when we get to item 16, hopefully everybody will remember what you said, because we want the light to shine on your comment as well as everyone else.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Cheryl Catuar.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm here today to thank you for your proclamation for domestic violence awareness. Proud to say that after 22 years, I am a survivor. And thanks to Daly City Police, actually, who assisted me during that critical time. I'm in front of you again today because more than a year ago, I submitted a complaint on racist remarks from Councilmember Di Giovanni to the Filipino community. And so far, after more than a year, it has not been addressed. Also, since that time that I spoke up, I've been harassed and subjected to intimidation. Me, my friend, just wherever we are, we would be asked to leave. And sometimes, on two occasions, actually, Ms. Di Giovanni asked, actually, asked the Daly City Police to have me removed, even though I had no crime. So that has not been addressed as well. So last week, there was a lot of people who expressed concerns about misconduct, her behavior, and also assault. And, you know, two weeks after, it's not been addressed. I feel like it's going to be the same as my complaint about her. I felt like I, I submitted a warning about her behavior, and it's just been escalating, right? And it's not just with me, it's with other people as well. So, I mean, these town hall meetings, she can't respond. And, you know, it's, it's frustrating because we come here all the time and take up time for productive things. And I feel like she should be afforded, you know, time to respond to all these allegations with a separate town hall, so that, you know, if it's not true, she can address it.
If you could wrap up your comments, Cheryl.
Oh, I just hope that that could be like an opportunity, because this is, you know, it's never going to end. I feel like she needs to say yes or no. That's it. I mean, so we can put it behind us.
Thank you, Cheryl, for your comments. Next up, we have Sunny Kwong.
I'm here just to make a quick comment regarding the parking situation on the King Plaza.
Excuse me, if we can leave the items for parking for item number 16?
Or will it be addressed later on?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Sunny. Next up, we have Juliet Exberia. And just as a reminder, that these comments are for general comments that are not on the agenda. So if these comments are for another agendized item, just wanted for me.
Laurie, just expect for me.
Oh, we can't have, speak twice.
It's okay, we can go to the next one.
Okay, we go to the next one?
Yeah, let's go to the next one.
Okay. Oh, again, this is, sorry, this is for item, that's, we're going to have to leave that for the next item, sorry. Okay. Again, just a reminder, if you want to submit a comment, we can give it to the city clerk so it can be on record. Okay. Next up, we have Lorenzo Listana.
My name is Lorenzo Listana. Although I live in San Francisco, but I have relatives here, who live here in Daly City. So, many of us know, have known Jaslyn as a longtime community worker in Sato Market in San Francisco. She helped Filipino veterans, seniors, and low income families. Jaslyn is mild-mannered, helpful, and respectful. So it is a shock to me that this act of violence and assault against Councilmember Manalo can happen. The violence inflicted on her is racist, unethical, disrespectful, not just to Jaslyn, but to all Daly City residents. This racist attack is also an attack against all Filipinos. That's what I believe. I share Councilmember Manalo's hurt and trauma that may have caused her sleepless night. So this type of violence is unacceptable and has no room, especially inside Daly City Hall. So I strongly urge our distinguished council members to please make Councilmember Giovanni, Di Giovanni accountable for her act of violence against Councilmember Manalo. And I ask Councilmember Di Giovanni to resign for reasons I said above, and for being unbecoming as a member of this August chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorenzo. Next speaker is Elmyra Lagundi.
Good evening. My name is Elmyra Lagundi, and I used to be a Daly City resident for a long time. And now I live in San Francisco. And I know Jaslyn since she worked in the Toma area, and she's a very nice person. She helped us, the seniors, during, whenever we have some happening in San Francisco, she's always there and she's willing to help us. So this, this action that somebody did to her, I think it's unacceptable. And we need more to, for, impart the investigation and, and so, so we can have a better, go, a better, better place in this, in Daly City. Thank you.
Thank you, Elmyra, for your comments. Next speaker is Alyssa T.
My name is Alyssa Antina, and I'm a member of this community. And even with the joy and sense of togetherness that is spread here, we have also spent numerous years trying to stop the prejudice and racism, going as far as back, being pushed out to make room for people that didn't look like us and would hate to see families fill the homes in their neighborhood. This is a horrific act that not only someone, that only someone can do when they lack empathy and professionalism. Regardless of who you are and where you come from, you shouldn't have to be fearful in a place of work. It is unfortunate that people who hold a place in power are using violence as a weapon in politics, dirty politics. We are calling for you to step down from your position and make room for others, folks who are not going to promote violence, hatred, and racism in Daly City. You are not for the people. You never were. You like to capitalize on those who may not know your true intentions, and there may not always be a seat available for us, but we sure will make one. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. So moving over to our friends on the virtual world, I'll now turn it over to staff to moderate public comment for our virtual attendees.
We have six hands raised. It's called Speaker is Jackie.
Quinn, here.
First, first called speaker.
Hello, this is Quinn.
No, Bob, it's not you. It's Jackie.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Your two minutes will be good.
Okay, thank you. They said somebody else's name. I heard Quinn also, so, you know, I just wanted to let everybody know that Pam came up to our, the mobile home park here, the Franciscan, a couple of weeks ago, and she helped distribute. couple of weeks ago, and she helped distribute food from a second harvest food bank. She was fortunate enough to meet George Aaron, ninety-two-year-old World War II merchant seaman, and she was very happy to make his acquaintance. He's quite a guy. And, you know, Glenn came up here, and he did the same thing, and so did David Cana, so we really appreciate that. And beyond that, we also appreciate all the city council members. We know Pam, we know Jaslyn, you're our friends. This, a lot of these undisputed, unsubstantiated allegations being made against Pam, it's kind of got to stop. People are innocent until proven guilty, and she's being tried in the court of public opinion. This is completely wrong. The police department is conducting an investigation, they'll come up with the facts, and then we'll find out what's going on. But just to keep jumping on Pam and asking her to step down and resign is inappropriate. I think people need to have a little more compassion for both people and stop this nonsense. I really don't like it, and I hope that this shines a light on my comments, Glenn. Okay. Thank you all so much for helping us out, and please help each other out, be being kind to one another. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Rudy.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, your two minutes will begin.
All right, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members of Daly City. My name is Rudy. I run a nonprofit violence prevention organization that's based in San Francisco called United Players, but we serve the whole Bay Area. I'm calling to talk about the violence that you guys are speaking on, whether it be domestic violence, gun violence, any type of violence, is very unacceptable. And the gentleman is right, he said, we have to find out, because everybody is proven innocent until guilty. The investigation should be set forward, and if it proves and demonstrates that the lady put hands or did what she did to Jaslyn, she needs to be held accountable. Mayor said, hurt people, hurt people. You're absolutely right. But heal people, heal people. And there is no healing if there's no accountability that's being served. There is no accountability if things are not dealt directly and are just thrown under the rug, especially on a level when you have council people and mayors in the positions that you guys are in. Because you guys are voting in, serving the people, and you guys are leaders. How can you tell the community and the people to stop the violence if you're not willing to hold people accountable for the violence that they're doing? So as leaders, we looking at you to lead right. I know Jaslyn. When she says something, her word is bond. Everything that she has put forward in the city, in the region, and in the community has been spoken by us. She helped out with gun buybacks, street marches, peace rallies, and hate against Asians. Let's not let this be another hate against another Asian. Let's hold people accountable and make it mandatory if people cross that line, and let them know that violence is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have a caller by phone. Please press star six to unmute.
Hello, so my name is The Truth, and I want to clarify, where are the minutes from the October tenth, twenty twenty-two council meeting? There's no minutes, minutes ring out tonight? There should be minutes. So people are actually writing on my coattail as John Daly, as The Truth, so I'm an artist. I have my artwork in L.A., New York, Chicago, various different places, and I came up with the idea to showcase art in Daly City. That's cool, just give me kudos on that. Next is, okay, Pinocchio, somebody's lying. We found out who's lying. It's Manalo. She's not telling the truth. She's filing a false police report. She is guilty of perjury because she followed up with the court as well for a restraining order. The DA needs to look into this. Was there an assault? I don't think so. That was twenty-eight days ago. Why isn't Pam arrested? Why hasn't Pam, it's twenty-eight days, she hasn't spent twenty-eight seconds in jail. So she's lied to law enforcement, she's lied to the court, she's lied to the community, you guys are following her. She lied to the citizens, she lied to the nurses, she lied to everyone. But you know who's behind this is Ray. Ray's the one who's controlling Manalo. Manalo doesn't even know this. Manalo does not know how serious this matter is. Ray does, Ray's an attorney. He's setting her up. He set her up so that she could win reelection. He's a snake. He's vile. He's filth. He's scum. He's a sewer rat. Hello, wake up, people, this is election year. Ray's behind everything right now, and Manalo's taking it. They want to throw Pam under the bus, but they can't because there's no proof, there's no evidence. Pam's free. Pam's been free the last three council meetings. Why? Because there's no evidence. Wake up. No copy, come on, guys. And then, of course, Rod's racist. Rod's called Pam after her killer of skin. He's actually laughed at Councilmember Sylvester about BICOC. He's a racist, he's a slug too, he's scum. All three of those are disgraces to the race, they're vile, all they care about is reelection. They will throw their mother under the bus if they have an opportunity to. They're absolutely insane. You guys need to wake up because there's no evidence.
Two minutes have been reached.
You guys need to wake up. Wake up, community. Get educated.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have another caller by phone. Please press star six to unmute.
So I need to translate for Mary Ann Martinez here. Mary Ann, she's, her first language is Spanish, second language is English. So she reviewed the council meetings with me, as well as others, and she found very disturbing allegations from Ray Buena Ventura at the September twenty-sixth hearing. Again, Ray's an attorney. She saw Ray make the allegation, leading Manalo down the path, claimed to be a victim. Now, looking at, and she took a look at some of the news media about the door hitting Manalo, and, you know, we wonder why Manalo didn't go to the police. Instead, she went to the city manager. If you're assaulted by anyone at work, you go immediately to the police. You call nine-one-one, you report the incident. Why? You know why? So that person who did the assault gets arrested, so they cannot do it to somebody else. You get that person in jail, so they cannot do it to someone else. Pam's free because she never did it. Pam can do an assault again, but she never did the first assault. So you guys, I mean, she's sitting right here, and she's saying the same thing as me. She's saying, this is insane. You're convicting somebody without any proof. And there is no proof because she's still sitting there on council. You know, racism is rampant in this council. Racism is, I mean, Ray and Manalo did not accept the Jewish-American Heritage Proclamation. They did not sign off on it. It was presented without their signature. It was very, very embarrassing. And, you know, I mean, obviously, when you do a proclamation, everybody needs to sign it. So we need to get rid of the racist. We need to get rid of Ray, we need to get rid of Manalo, the DA needs to prosecute to the fullest extent of the law, because lying is terrible. And looking at, it's tough for Pam to look across the way, look at a liar, because that's what Manalo is. She's a straight liar.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have David.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name's David Mesa. I am a past president of the National Filipino-American Lawyers Association and a past president of the Filipino Bar Association of Northern California. I'm here in my personal capacity as a longstanding Filipino-American community member and contributor to the city of Daly City. Both of my kids, my eight-year-old son and my five-year-old daughter, are alumni at Village Nursery School and attend Filipino martial arts classes and ballet classes at Legacy and Westlake Performing Arts Center. As a lawyer, I've done volunteer pro bono legal services in Daly City and proudly attended swearing-in ceremonies for Ray Buena Ventura for city council, as well as Mike Kengona's retirement ceremony at city hall. I have many fond memories celebrating accomplishments of Filipino-American lawyers and community members inside the walls of the cherished institution of city hall. My wife, kids, and I celebrated from home when Daly City swore in its first Filipino-American woman mayor in 2017. That is why it pains me to have to make this public comment. Workplace bullying, intimidation, and violence is unacceptable. What type of example are we setting for the youth that visit these cherished halls when this type of egregious behavior is alleged to be taking place behind closed doors by elected officials? Seeing photos of the bruises on Councilmember Manalo's back is heartbreaking, but the community stands strong with her, and we are optimistic that the city's investigation will justify appropriate disciplinary action against Councilmember Di Giovanni. This type of behavior should not be tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Jackie. Last called speaker, Jackie.
Jamie, Ms. Jamie. Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Jamie Belangia, and I am a longtime thirty-plus-year resident of Daly City. Upon listening to the last council meeting on October tenth, I did listen to a concerned citizen, Ms. Lavanda, stating a few years ago, Councilwoman Di Giovanni had made a racist comment. Continuing to hear these allegations, I do ask for further investigation of these issues. I speak for many that are concerned and confused and would like a public announcement on what our mayor and councilmen and women plan to address this issue. Thank you.
For your comments.
Thank you, Leilani, for moderating. Next on the agenda is solidifying the consent agenda. Are there any items in the consent agenda that would like to be pulled?
Mayor, what about item number seven for Ms. Padilla?
Okay, you have item number seven.
Thank you.
Are there any other items? All right, seeing none, oh, yes.
With the exception of item number seven, I make a motion that we approve the other agenda items.
Second, second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, item number seven, commend Angela Padilla on the occasion of her retirement. Whereas Angela, or best around known as Angie in these halls, Angie Padilla retired on October first, two thousand twenty-two, concluding her, concluding over thirty-eight years of dedicated service with Daly City. And whereas Angie started her career with Daly City as a typist clerk in April nineteen eighty-four and received four promotions, including office assistant in October nineteen eighty-four, senior office assistant in August nineteen ninety-three, senior executive assistant in October two thousand five, administrative, secretary administrative assistant to city council in July eighteen, on July two thousand eighteen. And whereas Angie served for, served four city managers and one interim city manager and nineteen city council members during her employment. And whereas Angie completed the Daly City Supervisor's Training Academy in the spring of two thousand nine, whereas Angie was recognized as the two thousand twenty-one Employee of the Year by Councilmember Justin Manalo, who was serving her second term as mayor. And whereas Angie will always be remembered for her wealth of knowledge of city operations, her dedication to the city council, city manager's office, Daly City workforce, and her commitment to the entire community of the city of Daly City. Now therefore, be resolved by the city council of Daly City, city of Daly City, that it does hereby commend Angie Padilla for her many years of dedicated and outstanding service to the Daly City community and extends its very best wishes to Angie on the occasion of her retirement. I hereby certify the foregoing to be a true copy of a resolution adopted by the City Council of Daly City, California, at our regular meeting today on October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, by allowing the vote of our members. I would like to open this to our council members for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Angie has given so much to the city of Daly City, and just want to wish her the utmost best, and you will be missed up there in the city manager's office, but never does she skip a beat. When I remember seeing Angie, she has so much energy and always, just on top of things. Can you imagine hearing what the mayor mentioned of how many administrations Angie has served? It's pretty phenomenal. And she does her work always with a smile and always with excellence and professionalism. And so it was definitely an honor for me to honor her with the mayor employee, mayor's employee award. Angie, enjoy, enjoy, enjoy a well, well-deserved retirement. You deserve it wholeheartedly, and I hope that you're not a stranger, and we get to see each other around here in the city of Daly City. I know you're not too far off in a town next door. But Angie, much love, and we appreciate you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for those of you that don't know, it's actually Angie that really is sort of the, she really checks us. I mean, it's not the city manager, it's not the city attorney, it's Angie. Because Angie, she's there, and she knows what's going on, and she's the one that keeps us sort of updated and always keeps on top of us, makes sure we don't miss meetings and that we have everything we need. I just couldn't not thank her enough. And Angie, if you're watching, I want you to know how much I appreciated you from the moment that I first stepped on my role as a council member. You've always been very accommodating, very helpful, you've kept it real, you told me what I needed to know, and sometimes said things that were constructive but critical. And so I appreciated that, and I'm gonna miss your honesty, your candidness, your ability to get folks together, and just, I think, I think you took care of us. And I'm just so grateful to have worked with you and to have one, someone like you. And I, when Mayor Manalo gave you that Employee of the Year recognition in two thousand twenty-one, I said then, you were like the unsung hero of the administration, because I truly believed it. And your presence, it's gonna be difficult to replace because you are something else. And I'm gonna miss you. I'm thankful for all the years that you've served, and I just really, really, I can't say enough, and it's gonna be, it's really a sad day that you're not gonna be with us anymore, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, there is enough words for Angie. Angie's the backbone of everybody. And when people say they can multitask, and usually multitasking, people can't get everything done. But she was the multitasker that could get everything done. And she did it for, imagine, five council members, city manager. I mean, that's a lot to handle in the whole office. And she never complained, and when the agenda was ready, like on our Mondays, she would stay, she would just stay to make sure that the agenda packet was done until the last minute. She didn't care that it was five o'clock or five-thirty. She never complained. And I'm sure she could write a book on the many administrations of council members that she's been through. But she's much loved, and enjoy your, after thirty-two years, well-deserved with your grandchildren, and you definitely are missed. And your values have never changed from the time I've met you, and I appreciate that, Angie. And we'll continue all those nice talks that we had, and I'll take things to heart that you know that the reflection of same values is... you know that the reflection of same values is very important. So thank you very much, Mayor, and putting that forward for her. But there's so many more things we could say, but given the time constraint, and hopefully we'll see her again. She'll be coming to events, she said. So thank you very much, and we love you, Angie, and no one can replace you. I mean, people can replace you, but never the same. So thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Angie, I'm going to try to keep this brief, but there are some important parts that I do want to let you know. You know, normally in life, as you move up and you get promoted, I once asked my boss, how do you know everything? And you know what he said to me? I don't, but I surround myself by those who do. Angie was that type of person when I first got on the council. Being an elected official doesn't mean you're higher than anyone else. So I reached out to Angie and said, Angie, what do you think? I always ran things by her. And for those of you who are in corporate and if you take on a new role as a boss, get to know your secretary, because they know more about that organization than you do. I never forgot that. Remember Ms. Mabelang and her statement earlier, and I called her on it, and I talked about a rubric? A rubric is a chart that you check off on the boxes as to what good looks like, and is objective. In the case of Angie, she was not objective, but she was subjective. Subjective mean personal, biasness, but she really didn't display that. What she displayed to everyone was experience. From what I've learned before, such and such does not like that. Such and such schedule is like this. That takes someone special. And Angie, you were that someone special. Something that I will never, ever forget. So with that being said, Angie, thank you for your service to the city of Daly City. Was it 38 years? I'm trying to think where I was 38 years ago. But anyway, thank you so much, Angie. You will be sorely missed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Angie, I know you're watching out there, just thinking about you every single day, your health, your wellness. Thank you for everything, for transitioning me into becoming a council member. When we talk about people that you go to work, sometimes you go to work because you want to meet the people, you miss your coworkers, and that's what Angie was. She was the Energizer Bunny. She was that person that took care of everyone, that institution of knowledge. And you know when a person's really, really down for you is when they will come in when they're not even asked. There was one instance where I forgot to bring a certificate, and I did not know how to get ahold of anybody. And then Angie came in on her day off on a weekend to print it out, and she said, Rod, do you want this certificate to look purty? And I was like, of course. She took up the sticker, put it on there, cut up the ribbon. I was like, dang, I thought you were just going to print it out. I thought that was purty enough. But thank you, Angie, for everything that you've done for myself and my colleagues and everybody in Daly City Council from, from top to bottom and sideways. Thank you, enjoy your retirement, and you know, you have my phone number, let's still stay connected, so thank you. So with that, I'd like to offer introduction to, I mean, introduce a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Angie, take care, have a good night, go to sleep. Going off to the next agenda item, public hearings, item number 11, introduction of ordinance adding Chapter 9.58, unlawful possession of used catalytic converters, and we have Captain Cameron Christensen.
Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, before you this evening for discussion and first reading as a proposed ordinance for the unlawful possession of a catalytic converter. On October 10th, 2022, council set today during the regularly scheduled council meeting as the time and place for the first reading and public presentation of the ordinance. Staff is proposing the adoption of the ordinance to add Chapter 9.58 to the Daly City Municipal Code to prohibit the unlawful possession of any used catalytic converter not attached to a vehicle unless the possessor has valid documentation or other proof to verify they are in lawful possession of a catalytic converter. For purpose of the ordinance, a used catalytic converter would be any catalytic converter that had been installed on a vehicle. Lawful possession would require being the lawful owner of the catalytic converter or be in possession of the catalytic converter with the lawful owner's written consent. The ordinance will not require proof the catalytic converter was stolen to establish the unlawful possession. A person would be required to show documentation or other proof to verify lawful possession, which can include a title or certificate of registration showing legal interest in the vehicle, matching the vehicle identification number permanently marked on the catalytic converter, written authorization from the person or entity that holds the certificate or title or registration of the vehicle from which the catalytic converter was detached, or evidence the catalytic converter was acquired in lawful transaction pursuant to Business and Professions Code. Any violation of the ordinance would be punishable by a misdemeanor, which may include a fine or imprisonment, or both, as provided in the California Government Code. A fine may not exceed $1,000, and imprisonment may not exceed six months. In conclusion, staff recommends the council conduct a public hearing and introduce the attached ordinance prohibiting the unlawful possession of used catalytic converters.
Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank you, Acting Chief, for doing that, and thank our mayor and councilmember Sylvester, because this has been an ongoing issue. And for people who don't know, that I will share a little personal story, because I see one of my friends that was a victim of these catalytic converters, Ms. Hernandez, and then Ms. Fay, and who had contacted our Daly City Police, who was very kind, and she was a victim more than one time. So it spurred me into looking into different ordinances in different cities. And she knows the history, because I discussed it with her, that when I saw the one in South San Francisco, I thought it was something that Daly City should look into. And then I brought it forth and asked my councilmembers, so she knows she's here tonight, that the mayor agreed to put it on the agenda, Ms. Fay, and that so we could take a step in the right direction. I know it doesn't take away some of the things that happened to you on repeated, and other seniors and other victims in our community, but it does, as the Acting Chief and the one even in South San Francisco said, it's a tool in their toolbox. It actually gives them more, because we know it's an ongoing issue, and I wanted to make sure that you knew that I did, she knew that as well, on a personal note, was looking into some solution for you and others like you. So this is what I was discussing with you at the Bury-Bury at that time, and to let you know, it's a follow-through from my heart to yours that had never left me of the pain and what you would call me and the burden that it caused you. So Acting Chief, as you know, our Daly City Police, they're on top of everything, and I respectfully ask if I may introduce this ordinance, and on behalf of the victims, and as well as Councilmember Sylvester had suggested a task force at the time, and our mayor also was in big concern, and thank that this is a tool, and thank you for looking into it and see that is okay with you as well, and our PD, and our city manager as well, and our council. So to thank the whole council, thank you.
Acting Chief Christensen.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
We've come a long way. Governor Newsom passed two bills pertaining to catalytic converter thefts, and as Councilmember De Giovanni indicated, and I indicated at the last council meeting, this gives our officers an additional tool in their arsenal to investigate catalytic converter theft, especially after they're stolen, and that's what this is going to do. Now, in the, in your paragraph, you stated about a VIN number. Not unless things have changed, but I didn't know they were putting VIN numbers onto our, onto catalytic converters. Matter of fact, it was an idea that I had that when we do establish a task force, I have many ideas to which I think would thwart the stealing of catalytic converters, because for police officers, once you've taken a catalytic converter, it's based upon the probable cause. When you stop someone and you see, oh, why is that catalytic converter disconnected? And it raises a flag. But I'm recommending something called an OAN, and I'm sure you know what that is, and for the public, OAN is an owner's applied number. And I would like to see a mechanism where we employ our body shops in all of Daly City, open to every Daly City resident, that you can take your car into a body shop and say, can you put my owner's applied number on there? So that if it's ever stolen, how do we identify it? I don't care what car it came from, came from a Prius or a Honda, but it has an owner's applied number, and it is up to the body shop to maintain a database where the person registered the car, where they live, the make, model, year of the vehicle, and even the color of the vehicle. Speaking of color, remember we talked about breast cancer awareness?
Yes, sir.
And on your left and right sleeves, you are wearing pink. We should also employ these body shops to paint those catalytic converters hot pink, so that when, when you go out and there's an officer seeing amongst the whole barrage of catalytic converters, and they're mostly silver or charcoal in color, hot pink, oh, you know? So anything to do to help, and I'm sure, you know, I've got some plenty, I've got plenty of ideas, but I think that this is a step in the right direction. I thank you so much. Thank you for bringing this back, and we are on the right track. So keep that in mind, Daly City, if you live in Daly City, I want you to have free engraving and hot pink on your catalytic converters. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Acting Chief Christensen, on all your work on this. You know that many of our residents in our community have seen the theft happen not only once, but twice or so, and this is definitely a step to ensure that there's mechanisms to, so that this doesn't happen in the future. It takes a strain on the pockets of our residents, also not being able to go to work or even take their children to school. So I appreciate all your hard work on this. I am definitely in full support of this ordinance. Thank you.
I have no other comments. I think my colleagues have said most. Vice Mayor?
I just have some questions, if I may. So, you know, I don't know much about catalytic converters, but I'm just curious. So if, if the catalytic converter did not have, let's say, an identification on it, is it easily recognizable, or can you tell, without having to do so much of a delay, that this particular converter belongs to this car and that car?
No, they're all pretty distinctive as far as the type of vehicle they belong to. I mean, it's an emissions control part that attaches to the exhaust, so it's going to be similar in nature. You all have an inlet-outlet pipe on the, on the device itself, but they all vary a little bit as far as shape-size, as far as specific vehicle.
And then as far as any identifying information on the converter itself, if it doesn't have that ID system that, that was talked about, I guess my question is, how can you tell that?
How can we tell that it's associated to a vehicle? Or, I mean, that's the point, to some extent, of the ordinance is to get away from the fact that I have to actually attach it to a vehicle.
I see.
So now it's just mere possession of a used catalytic converter that you don't have any type of proof or documentation as a lawful owner. So if you were to buy a used one, the Business and Professions Code has requirements for the resale of used property that specifically states that it needs to take identification, photograph, everything else, and you should get a receipt with that catalytic converter and some way to identify it. So if you were to buy a used one, which you could, from a dismantler or somewhere else, they're supposed to give you documentation that shows where you purchased it from, what it is, and how the ability to identify that. If you don't, that's kind of what this ordinance is designed for. It's just general possession of a used catalytic converter with no, and clearly there'll be a full investigation, probable cause, but anything to suggest that you don't have the lawful ownership of that catalytic converter.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
It's time, I'd like to, does anybody want to give a motion?
A motion?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just for formality, can you open and close the public hearing for any comments?
Yes. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any public comments for this item?
None. I receive none.
Okay. I'm seeing none.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Introduce, can I have somebody introduce the motion?
Thank you. I'd be proud to introduce this motion on behalf of all the victims and Ms. Hernandez. I know you're sitting there, so, yeah, thank you very much, and make a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion for a city attorney to read by title only?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance at the city council of the city of Daly City adding Chapter 9.58 to the Daly City Municipal Code regarding unlawful possession of used catalytic converters.
We have a second? Oh, no, we did that right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Can we have a council member introduce the ordinance?
Please, I would be honored to do so.
Okay. All right, so we introduce ordinance. And then that's about it, right, Rose? Nat?
That's it. The second reading will be at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Item number 12, under Communications, Developer Selection and Authorization to Prepare an Exclusive Negotiating Amendment, or Agreements for 1837, Una Perro Sara Boulevard, Daly City, California, and I'll hand it over to Ms. Tatum.
Great. Thank you so much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. It's an exciting night. This is the evening that there will be developer selection and authorization to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement with said selected developer. By way of background, can you not hear me? Sorry about that. As you all may recall, we had a selected developer for this site a few years ago, and unfortunately, that deal fell through, so the city reopened an RFP process at the end of last year, and that closed. And at the time, we had five proposals submitted. In February and March, the council was able to do a first round of interviews with those five developers. Three were selected to move on and provide additional information in the form of a refined term sheet. In your staff report, there was a list of items that they were supposed to provide. Some of the things were purchase price, due diligence, and closing contingencies, and different qualitative and quantitative benefits of the different proposals. A summary of the developer terms that was prepared by Cosmont is still included in your packet as Attachment A. I think it's a very good summary that shows what the different projects include. At the time, there were three developers. At the, in the second round of interviews on July 18, as you may recall, one of the developers dropped out, that was Phase 3. So that left the city with JM McLennan Development and LF George Properties Corporation as the two remaining developers with proposals for the site. At the second interviews in July, the council had some remaining questions, particularly about revenue projections for the two different developments. So since that time, staff and Cosmont has been working with the development teams to get additional information. Both development teams submitted responses to the additional information requests, and with that, Cosmont worked directly with the development teams to come up with a summary of what those benefits would be. Much of the projected revenue would come either from the initial sales price or ongoing revenue that would include property tax, sales tax, business license taxes, and transient occupancy tax. A summary of what Cosmont A summary of what Cosmont prepared is Attachment D in your staff report. Cosmont is here this evening, so if there's any more specific questions, we can certainly dig into those. But by summary, JM McLennan Development's submittal reflects a mixed-use hotel residential concept, 180 hotel rooms, 40 studios for flexible use, and 10 top-floor condominium units, as well as a 30,000-square-foot conference center and a 30,000-square-foot athletic club. Based on the analysis, the proposal would contribute $1,050,000 in one-time revenue from the property sale and an ongoing revenue stream of approximately $1.6 million annually, most of that coming from TOT. The LF George Properties Corporation's submittal is a 300-unit residential building with 25 affordable units for Daly City employees and an additional 20 affordable units. An 8,000-square-foot community center and 10 ground-floor commercial tenant spaces are also proposed. Cosmont's analysis indicates one-time revenue of $1.8 million and an ongoing annual revenue stream of $429,000. So that's just kind of the basic summary. Again, Cosmont can work through how those numbers were calculated. Once a developer is selected, the City Council can direct staff to prepare an exclusive negotiating agreement. That is essentially a contract between the city and the chosen developer to continue pursuing the development concept. It does not tie the council into having to approve a project or even approve the sale, and it doesn't force the developer to have to buy the property. But what it is, is it's a good-faith agreement that the developer will take on the risk of exploring development on the site, and the city will not negotiate with other developers during the term of that exclusive negotiating agreement. And what staff's proposing tonight is, once the developer is selected, staff will work with the development team, prepare an exclusive negotiating agreement, and bring it back to the council at a later meeting so that they can review the terms of that agreement. So with that, that concludes my presentation. And again, both development teams are present this evening. They are not instructed to give a presentation, but if there are questions, they are here. And we have Ken Hera in person from Cosmont to answer any of the revenue questions. And we also have Joseph Diegus in the virtual world available as well. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Tatum. I'd like to open it up to our council. Were there any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank both parties for being here this evening, and thank you for the comparison as far as the financial analysis on the horizon for both projects. I know that there are both parties here. I think two of the questions from the last meeting that I recall, was number one, I put on the question on working with the labor in regards to San Mateo County and ensuring that that there's, you know, good-faith efforts and real fruition in that regard to working with labor in the county. Number two, the other question was, what is the community benefits that will be forthcoming in regards to the project? I think those were some of the two items that were brought forth. You know, I was really interested in seeing, you know, the workforce development piece of it, especially ensuring, you know, hiring local as well as ensuring that there's, you know, utilizing labor in the projects, both in construction as well as in operations. And so those are some of the questions I still have, and if any of the parties would like to answer them. So, yeah, those are the two I have. Thank you.
Are you asking those questions of the development teams?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So, I don't know who you want to ask first. It looks like McLennan's up. How do we see first?
Either or. Yeah.
Is this how you want to proceed to?
I, yeah, if you're the project sponsor, could answer kind of what the progress has been would be very helpful. Yes.
Yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for tonight. We're finally here, so that's great. We have reached out and we have signed agreements with the labor groups. How many labor people are here tonight?
There's quite a few. And we're absolutely 100% labor committed. We have signed agreements, and we're ready to move forward. On the operations side, we just started our discussions on Thursday with Local 2. We have agreed to set up a meeting hopefully this week. It's not going to be prolonged, but we're, because of our hybrid occupancy of the hotel units and the residential units, we, it's not a real simple agreement. So we both agree that attorneys need to get involved, but we're working on that this week.
So you have reached out to the operations in regards to hotel?
Yeah, we did. We spoke on Thursday.
Okay. Thank you. And then I think the other question was around community benefits and local hire?
Yeah, so with the, with the labor groups, there's certainly the availability through their database to hire within the, within our community first. Tough to do. Everybody's living, you know, sometimes Bay Area, you know, especially on this side of the Bay, it gets pretty expensive. So there's a lot of people that commute, so, but yes, it's absolutely been addressed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I do see representation from LF George.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Gerald Green. I'm here on behalf of LF George Properties. We have, or I have spoken to Mr. Bart Parto, I'm sorry. Parto, I'm sorry, I'm going to have a hard time pronouncing the name, but I did meet with the labor council, and they were kind enough to provide me with a template for an agreement that we are prepared to enter into. Once the bid is awarded, we will sit down, we will negotiate the PSL, and come to, back to the council with that agreement. I think previously, we did commit to a certain number of jobs that were going to be both local as well as union jobs. And I think that we are prepared at this state to increase that. We, at this stage, are prepared to commit with that PSL and to the council that at a minimum, 95% of all the jobs in this project, both construction and operational jobs, will be both union and devoted to local hiring as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Yeah. Mr. George, so Councilmember Manala alluded to that. So you're saying that 95% you would like to commit to? Is there any reason why you didn't sign at the time? I mean, I'm just trying to get a feel of, like, while we're here, this is the decision time for us to make this decision, and this is one of our biggest concerns, one of many, you know, economics as well. But is there, the other applicant came with a signed agreement, and currently there is not any signed agreement, or did you meet with him again to sign any?
We did not meet with him again. We have seen a template, and Mr. Lamb is prepared, as I said, once there is a commitment for the project, that he would be entering into an agreement. He was not comfortable doing so now because there's still details that I think have to be hammered out. And I think that he is prepared to walk down that path once we have been committed to the site.
Okay, so you're asking us to make the decision before it's signed, right?
That is what we're asking, but I am also committing to the fact that we will sign.
You're committed to, so I'm just trying to understand this, like, this is one of the biggest, most important issues, and that creates the jobs. And to me, if you're here, and then the thing, it's not to criticize anyone, I just didn't understand the process, because we even had a longer time in between, a couple delays, and that gave ample time to even meet with Bart as well, Building and Trades, again, to try to hammer it out. And I'm just curious also about why the 95%?
Is there another number that you would like to see?
Oh, no.
We would be prepared to commit to 100% if that would convince you?
A project labor agreement.
We are prepared to provide as many of the jobs as possible, at a minimum of 95% that would be. We don't have control over the, over all of the jobs yet. We don't have a project description entirely. So Mr. Lamb is prepared to commit as much as he can. He has not signed because at the time, he was not prepared to enter into that agreement as a template. We will, we'll take the time to move forward with a signed agreement before we come back with the negotiating agreement with the council. There is no other explanation at this stage. We're not hiding anything, and we're not, I think, afraid to enter into that. We just felt that we needed a greater commitment.
Okay. And the other one is the, the economics. Like, I see here that the numbers of yours is 429,000 projection annually?
That's correct.
That's correct. And Mr. Cosmont, is that, I believe Mr. Cosmont is the one who reviewed the economic numbers?
Yeah.
Ken Hera.
Oh, yeah. Hi, Ken.
Hi.
How are you?
Yes. This is a result.
Okay, thank you. So you checked the numbers. So yours is 429,000. Okay.
In addition to a one-time contribution of $1.8 million.
Yeah. And then I believe that Councilmember Manala asked about the community benefits as well?
The community benefits include the contribution, but we also have area within the project that Mr. Lamb is prepared to make available to the community for community meetings, for other community events. He is prepared to make that space available. I also point out that we're adding additional affordable units, that we intend to commit to workforce housing in excess of the affordable requirements that the city imposes on the project. And at this stage, that's, we believe those are substantial benefits to the community.
Okay. All right, this time, Mr. McLennan? I'll be asking you the same questions, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So, Mr. McLennan, the same, I guess, basically, that I'm going to ask, to be fair, on the commitment of your project labor agreement when you met with the Building and Trades? So it is completely signed?
Yes.
And that?
We met with, with the representatives. We have signed agreements, and we're ready to proceed.
And so that means, obviously, that's a project labor agreement, which means it's 100%?
Correct.
Okay. And then, on your meetings, so that's a commitment on your part, and it's signed? And also, here, your revenue as well, it says here, which, Ken Hera, check the numbers, yours is $1.6 million, if that's correct?
Those are Cosmont's numbers.
Yes, correct.
And that's annually, per year? So it's $1.7 million per year to the city.
Okay. $1.7. And then you're currently, as you said, with Local 2? And if things go well for operational, do you have any hesitancy in having an agreement with Local 2?
No. And as I've said to the council, you know, Local 2 is the salt of the earth, right? Those are the people that maintain the rooms on a daily basis, whatever we can do to make that a wonderful place to work in Daly City is what we're going to do. So that was the theme of our discussion last week with Local 2, and I think we're going to, we'll achieve that.
Okay. And I was going to ask, I'll ask the representative, Mr. Lamb, I'll ask you first, as you're up there. So I know that you've been, this is really a key as well, committed to be present in the community, right?
Correct.
And then, do you have a history in Daly City for being present in the community?
Yeah, I think we have a number of people here that will present this evening on my involvement with the City of Daly City. I've been a business owner here since 1979. I've been involved in the community on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. We support, you know, all of the nonprofits in town, along with the schools and the Daly City library.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll ask the gentleman for the representative for, as well. Thank you, thank you, Mr. McLennan. Thank you very much. So I know Mr. Lamb is not here tonight, but I'm sure you can speak on his behalf. So the commitment to the community, and is there a history with Mr. Lamb and the Daly City community?
Mr. Lamb is, is present.
Oh, he's here?
He is present.
Oh, great.
Mr. Lamb has a long history here with the City of Daly City. He's also carrying on another project that was awarded on Saramonte Boulevard, which I believe was awarded to him, and that includes a large hotel as well as some 200 units of housing. The other question with regard to?
Oh, yeah, just, yeah, just like, like, community things that he's been involved in, since he has a long history. Is he, I'm sorry, I didn't want to bother him. Is he here, here, present?
He is present.
Okay.
Yes, he is present.
So like, community events, community nonprofits that he's supported?
George, would you like to explain? George?
I don't want to bother him. Oh, thank you, Mr. Lamb. There you are.
You should bring a translator.
Does he need an interpreter?
He has a translator.
Oh, he has a translator right there.
Yeah.
Hi, Mr. Lamb, it's okay, I don't want to put you on the spot. It's okay. Is he okay?
He's made donations to the school district. He's also made some donations with regard to addressing homeless issues.
Okay. In Daly City. Thank you, Mr. Lamb, for being here. Thank you, Mr. Lamb. That's it for now, right? Thank you very much.
Any other comment questions from my colleagues? If not, I'd like to open up.
I have.
Oh, go ahead.
I have.
Vice Mayor, go right ahead.
Maybe, Ken, can I ask you some questions? So when we started down this path, you know, our, our goal, or our mission maybe, was to get a hotel, because we thought that that would benefit our city in terms of generating revenue. My question is, what is your opinion of the market of hotel sites? And what does the future look like in terms of, you know, we're coming out of a time of COVID, and obviously, we weren't traveling as much, and what impact has that made? And what is, what do you think as a professional when it comes to forecasting the future of the hotel and hotel business?
Sure. Let me answer that in a couple different ways, Mayor and members of the council. Number one, I think the hotel industry was hit pretty hard as a result of COVID because of something you just mentioned, and that is the lack of travel. I think business travel was more affected, as it turns out, over an 18-month period. The leisure travel has come back in a stronger way than the business travel. I think the business travel is trying to make up for that, so I think the hotel business is slowly but surely trying to come back into its own. Secondly, I come back to the notion, in the City of Daly City, there are so few hotel rooms. I think you technically have one or two. So I've always looked at your community as there being just a lack of supply of hotel rooms. And I think that can create an opportunity for a hotel. Now, ironically, had a hotel been built in the past several years that we've been working on this, maybe it would have suffered because of COVID. So in a weird way, you have some timing that may work to your advantage. And the third thing I'll say, though, is that I think in general, construction costs have really caused a challenge for new development. So I actually think that the bigger issue is, what are the costs of these projects because they're significant? Are they financeable? And so I think with And so I think with the combination of uses, and I think residential as well, there's going to be the ability to probably finance those. But we're in a much more challenging environment today than when we embarked on this process, primarily because of inflation, construction costs, and interest rates.
And as far as, okay, so we have, I think, you mentioned one hotel, which is the Hampton Inn. Where do you know of the capacity and the vacancy rate of that hotel as...
I don't currently know what it is. We're happy to do that research. But I do know that in the past, it had been at a very high capacity. Its occupancy was generally high. And anecdotally, you would see that in the reflection of the rates, what's called ADR, average daily rate, that a Hampton Inn was driving a significant amount of cost of hotel stay because you had so few rooms available in your city. I'm happy to look at what it is today, but I still go back to that lack of supply, which could create an opportunity for a hotel.
And then you mentioned the idea of the cost of construction. And I'm trying to figure out, in terms of the construction, building a hotel versus building, like, let's say, the George Lamb project, does that, the cost differ in terms of the type of building they're constructing in terms of the cost? Is it going to be basically the same? Or is it going to be much more?
I think because of the density of the site and the height of a building, whether it's residential as proposed or residential and hotel, you're going to face the construction cost challenge for both those projects. And I think a very fair question, frankly, for the developers, is what is their take on today's market conditions with respect to costs and financeability? Because I think six months ago, we would have had even yet a different discussion about the cost of construction and the cost, and whether something's financeable.
Yeah.
So I think it's very relevant, and I want to give you the best advice as a city, that both projects should be under that same scrutiny. And frankly, I think both projects are under that same risk.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let me pose your question to Mr. Green, and then I'll ask Mr. McLennan. So maybe I could start with this way, Mr. Green. You know, when we started, again, when we started this path, it was because we saw an opportunity with the hotel tax to generate revenue for Daly Cities. And the RFPs that we requested were focused on, we were interested in projects that would develop a hotel. Now, it has morphed into other ideas. We had the Life Science Building, which, at first, I was like, what are we doing here with the Life Science Building? But I saw the argument that was made and the change, perhaps, in the reasoning of how that could be economically beneficial to the city. I'm first curious as to why you thought not to come up with a hotel and instead come up with a residential, which I think is also a novel idea. But I'm wondering, is building the residential units versus a hotel a factor that perhaps you saw as more of a detriment and not as feasible as a hotel?
Yes.
And why?
I agree with that. I also agree with what you heard from your consultant with regard to the economic realities. Mr. Lamb's experience is in developing residential projects. And I believe that that experience has also resulted in relationships with investors and finance. And I believe that he wishes to use those relationships and those experiences to be able to carry out this project. I think that Mr. Lamb believes that to develop and finance a hotel project during these times is much more difficult. It's likely that we're going to be using a lot of concrete and steel in these buildings because of the height. And as such, those are the elements that, as you heard, are really going to impact the ability to finance this project and go forward. And I believe that he believes his experience and his contacts, his investors, are what he believes are strong enough to be able to carry him through this process and not have to go out to new institutional investors to try to convince them that a 300-room hotel in Daly City is, is, is financeable.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Well, Mr. McLennan? So your project entails, obviously, a hotel, but it is morphed into other things, right? You have residential, you have an event center, and you have a fitness center. So I guess I'm wondering, what is your reasoning to have all those different elements in your project rather than just doing a hotel, which is what we had initially been asking for?
Right. When did I first come to Daly City? With my proposal? 2010. It was a hotel-only requirement from the council. I walked into Tatum's office back then and I said, we're in the hotel business in San Francisco on Lombard Street. To get a hotel-only facility financed, it's just not going to happen, right? That was just my opinion back in 2010. So my proposal back then was a mixed use. It was pretty much what it is today, except the event center has taken on, you know, another component that could be a big profit center for the city and for, and for us. So based on my, my family's operation of four hotels on Lombard Street, I just didn't think a hotel-only would work. So back then, we, you know, as we have now, it's a, it's a mixed use. If this site was just for residential only, it would have been sold 25 years ago. On the Bart Station, absolutely slam dunk, but no revenue to the city, right? And so I've always been, I mean, I, you know, I grew up here. We have always lacked for funds, right? City of Daly City doesn't have the business backbone that it takes to, you know, get that extra revenue. The council backed, I don't know when JS Properties was first put in, probably 25 years ago?
32.
32 years ago? Yeah, 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 that's right. And, you know, it was, putting up the parking structure is a huge benefit, right? I mean, if you had to put parking on this site today, there's no way it would pencil. But with the parking already installed and, you know, the hotel portion where it's, it's not, as Ken said, there's a lack of rooms in the city. I know from our research that the Hampton Inn was at, pre-COVID, right around a 92% occupancy. Crazy, crazy numbers, you know? But, you know, and so that's why we're, we have proposed, along with what Ken said, the financeability of our project, we feel, is, is there, right? We can put in the hotel. If the hotel industry takes, you know, a downturn again, we have the flexibility that all of our hotel rooms are going to have kitchenettes. We can put those. We have proposed a 2.5% in lieu fee for the rental units to the city of Daly City. But we, you know, we'll work out whatever that number is, whatever the minimum hotel number is, you know, so that the city gets, gets the biggest benefit. I know the gig, right? Daly City needs, needs funds. And our project, I think, over an annual basis, you know, we'll, we'll do that. As far as our involvement in the area, I mean, you know, I, I'm proud of what we've done. I'm proud of my crew. I'm proud of everybody in town and what we do for all the different, the different groups. But, you know, as far as the financeability, we absolutely, that's why I came up with the idea of, let's put a deposit down, right? Let's put a timeline to where we're going to work with staff. This isn't going to go on for two years. We're going to get through it. We've signed our labor agreements, you know? We're, we're really ready to hit the ground running with this. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from my colleagues? As of right now, I'd like to have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. First, Speaker John Medina.
All right, I get to go first, huh? Okay, thank you. Mayor, council members, staff, thank you. Thank you all for being here, giving me the opportunity to speak. I represent Sprinkler Fitters, Local 433. I'm also a representative of the Building Trades. Actually, I would like really quick, all those members of the Building Trades, all the workers and all the, to stand up. Everybody that's representing the Building Trades tonight, just show a little presence of who's here. Thank you. So with, with these other representatives of the Building Trades here tonight, it's getting late. A lot of these guys got to go to work tomorrow. We're all away from our families right now, but it's important to let everybody know, when it comes to building in the city, we want these developers to know also, they need to consider using the, this local labor force. We are the community. We create pathways to good-paying careers in the construction field by supporting local state-approved apprentices' programs. We engage and educate local high schools, colleges, students, and community groups, and introduce them to careers with our Building Trades and through the TIP program. We need opportunities for local people to work where they live. This is an opportunity. We feel it's an obligation to this council and other councils and planning commissions to consider community benefits on all these projects that come to you guys. I hope this council will agree in choosing the right developer, Mr. McLaren's project. He has taken the time to actively engage with us and the rest of this council, and we hope that you guys will consider the same. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, John. Next speaker is Stella Roberts.
Good evening. I'm Stella Roberts. I'm the regional manager of Planet Fitness here in Daly City. I've been with Bob McLennan since 2008, overseeing two locations, and the larger location is super busy. We have decided to open our doors this summer to the teenagers in the community for them to work out for free. And hopefully, that will transcend to our new location if we are selected to open another location here in this project. The teens in the community have decided to work it out and take over our programs here in the city. And we're so excited to see how that can transcend into developing our teenagers for employment. And so, over the past 10 years, since being with this organization, we are the busiest health club in the area. And we are hoping that infectious fitness community will transcend into this new project. So, again, as far as fitness is related, I think that's a beautiful addition to the project that we're developing here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stella.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nick King.
Good evening. My name's Nick King. I'm an elected representative for the Glazers. Here tonight, a lot of my members live in this community. And J.M. McLennan is the person that we are supporting and we recommend. And we're just asking that you guys consider him for the developer. Thank you.
Nick. Next speaker is Victoria Magbila.
Mayor Das Magbual, Vice Mayor Buena Ventura, and City Council of Daly City. I'm here as a 19-year resident of Daly City, living atop of the hill, not far from the proposed development at 1837 Juniper Osera. I've always felt that Daly City has a lot of untapped potential. And I believe that the proposal submitted by Bob McLennan and J.M. McLennan Development goes a long way toward addressing the current lack of a city center in Daly City. Adding a hotel, health club, and especially a conference center in the area will bring vitality to a neighborhood that currently lacks much incentive for people from outside our community or even our own residents to visit. As someone who is active in the community, I have to leave Daly City to find an appropriate space to hold events for more than a few people and often go to San Francisco to find entertainment for myself and my family. Having our very own conference center would put us on the map as a destination, not just the gateway to the peninsula, a city slogan that I've never been fond of because to me, it sounds like we're on our way to somewhere else. In addition to the entertainment and beautification benefits that we will receive, Daly City can really use the income. We constantly hear about the special circumstances that we face because of the imbalance between our large population in proportion to the revenue we receive from business taxes. Our residents deserve to have our libraries, schools, public services, infrastructure, et cetera, funded in such a way as to compare to the more affluent cities around us. I also have to testify as to the ongoing community support that I've witnessed from Bob McLennan himself. He has proven time and time again over the years that he cares about our community by being an active volunteer and donor to many Daly City organizations. That's how I got to know him and why I believe that he's looking out for what's best for our city. I know that choosing between two proposals is not always easy, but in this case, one simply has to look at where the money will go and who is asking. I hope you'll choose J.M. McLennan Development and allow Bob to continue to make Daly City a better place to live and work. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Next speaker is Bart Pantoa.
That was a great attempt. Thank you.
Oh, did I miss it up?
Bart Pantoa?
Pantoa.
I am the Business Manager, Secretary of Treasure of the San Mateo County Building Trades Council. As mentioned by one of my brothers earlier, we have a lot of men and women here who get up and are usually working, breaking a sweat at 6:00 a.m. So being here late is obviously important to them, as well as this project. The Building Trades Council represents approximately 16,000 working men and women in and around San Mateo County, many of them who do live in Daly City. We are in favor of Bob McLennan and his project. As you've heard by all your reports leading up to this point, it's the most viable project for what Daly City wants and can use. Hotel, event center, health center. But even better, Bob came to my office, pen in hand, to sign an agreement with the Building Trades to build it 100% union construction, you know, which ultimately secures good union wages, secures good wages that can be spent at the movie theater next door, you know, that people can take their family out to a dinner once in a while. But also apprenticeships. And apprenticeships are pathways to a good career like I was able to have for 20 years in the trade, working in the field. The other thing is the sustainable income that Daly City will get from the tax, from the TOT. So the way we see it is this is the best choice. Approximately 450 construction workers will work on this project. But even better yet, those workers working on this project will also patronize businesses all around it. And when it's built, union workers working the, the building, working the hotel, and will also invest back in the community by spending good money in Daly City. So in closing, the choice is clear. You know, 450 working, construction workers and their families are benefit from this, this project. And I just want to end with this, that an unsigned agreement is no agreement. So I'm really encourage you to choose the McLennan project. Thank you.
Thank you, much, Bart. Next speaker, Tom Traier.
Thank you, council members. I appreciate you allowing us to speak here tonight on this. I'd just like to point out, I'm a lifelong union member. I signed the books in 18. Being a union member allowed me and my wife to buy our home before any of my other friends did. It really helped boost us in the community we live in. Union wages really do bump the middle class up, and that money then trickles through the whole community. Developers like McLennan, who have agreed to go all-union, help build the community. And I can't... And I can't stress that enough, I'm a living example. So, please, as a member of Sheet Metal Workers Local 104, support McLennan, support this project, and help boost up the middle class in Daly City. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next speaker is Charity Garcia. And then after would be Father Ed Dura. After.
Good evening. My name's Charity Garcia, and I'm a local resident here. I'm just gonna make it short. I have a script, but I just wanted to speak on behalf of parents. My two children went to, um, Planet Fitness. It was their first job, and they learned a lot from Planet Fitness. I'm also advocating for health, and so I hope that you would, um, approve the project of Bob McLennan. Thank you.
Thank you, Charity. Next up is Father Ed Dura, and after would be Nestor L. Fernandez II.
I come with blessings to all of you and to all the people here. I'm Father Ed Dura, I am the Assistant Priest of, uh, St. Augustine Church, and one-third of our parishioners are from Daly City. I come here to support Bob McLennan, because Bob McLennan is a very conscious of community participation. And, uh, I've spoken also briefly, this project that we are talking about now with the different priests. Father Roland de la Rosa, Pastor of San Bruno Church. Father Alex Ligaspi, uh, the pastor of, uh, Holy Angels Church in Colma. Father Oremako, pastor of Our Lady of Mercy in Daly City. And Father Raymond Reyes, pastor of St. Augustine Church. And Father Agosse Billete, pastor of Our Lady of Perpetual Health in Daly City. And I, Father Eduardo Dura, wholeheartedly support this project for the positive impact it will have on the people and the community of Daly City and the surrounding area. Speaking on behalf of my brother priest, we encourage the Daly City officials to please take into consideration the value to the community that Bob McLennan's project brings to our children, our youth, our young adults, and our seniors. We are hopeful that all who have a vote will humbly take a support into the consideration in building its room in a healthy community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Father Ed. Next up is Nestor L. Fernandez, and after, um, Mr. Fernandez would be Anthony Nguyen.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. My name is Nestor Fernandez. I'm the executive director of a nonprofit in San Francisco called the Telegraph Hill Neighborhood Center, or Tel-Hi. I've also worked and lived in Daly City and South San Francisco for the last 35 years. I'm also a deacon in the San Francisco Archdiocese. I'm a deacon at, uh, St. Augustine Church. And I'm speaking on behalf of J.M. McLennan and Bob McLennan, and the project that they proposed at 1837 Juniper Osera Boulevard. I've actually have a lot of stuff written down, but I've been erasing and adding, and I just want to tell you because of what I've heard. Coming out of college, I worked for Bob for about 12 years. I'm a Filipino, uh, working at the, working for, uh, as the general manager at Water Rocket was one of the biggest things that ever happened to me. It's actually kind of interesting because most of the members back then were white, and I was a Filipino, so it was really, uh, something for me to do, something that I really appreciate. The mission of Water Rocket, when we were working, when I was working there, was to enhance the lives of people in Daly City, but provide them a great place to workout, as well as, uh, a way to stay healthy, and for making a positive influence in the, influence in the community. And I, like many other, uh, people that worked for Bob, and worked at, uh, at Water Rocket and now Planet Fitness, have really benefited from that. While I was working at Water Rocket, um, those 12 years, Bob allowed me to go to get my MBA at USF, which I completed. And then that's, that was actually a big deal, because after you get your MBA, you move on. And he actually allowed me to do that and supported me in doing that, and I did move on. And so it's been a great, uh, benefit for me to do that, because in doing that, I've been able to, uh, enhance my career. And then at the, at 20, at a 27-year career in the fitness industry, the last 12 years I've been in nonprofit, where my vocation and my avocation come together. And I can't tell you enough how much, uh, the J.M. McLennan Development Company, as well as Bob McLennan, has done for the Daly City community. All you have to do is look at how long he's been in the community, how many lives he's touched, and all the things that he's done in a very positive way. The money that goes into this project will stay in Daly City. The workers will be Daly City residents or South San Francisco residents. And I can tell you just by working there, a lot of them will be black and brown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Next one is Anthony Nguyen. And then after Anthony will be Greg Hardeman.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, Daly City City Council Members. My name is Anthony Nguyenas.
Oh, Nguyenas, sorry about that.
Right too clearly. My handwriting is not that great, so. My name is Anthony, and I'm a business representative for the International Union of Painters and LA Trades. I represent over 10,000 finishing craft workers, painters, drywall finishers, glazers, and floor layers, many who live in this county and city. This project would benefit local workers and benefit the local economy. I urge your support of this project by developer J.M. McLennan, who is committed to an all-union project, which would create a pathway to construction apprenticeships for the young men and women of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyenas. My apologies for butchering your last name. Next up is Mr. Greg Hardeman, and then after that we have Sally Ortiz.
Good evening, President, Vice President, Council Members and Staff. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. Uh, I'm here, I represent the Elevator Constructors, uh, Local 8. We represent 1,500 men and women that, uh, build, maintain, and service the elevators that'll be used in this project. Not only is, uh, J.M. McLennan gonna commit to all-union, they're also gonna be the huge economic and community benefits to Daly City, which is much needed. And to the one other developer, I'd like to let them know that the correct answer is not 90, 95% union, but it's 100% union for projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardeman. Next up is Sally Ortiz, and then after Sally Ortiz is, um, Janesi Raimundo.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council Members. I'm Sally Ortiz of the Society of St. Vincent de Paul, St. Augustine Conference. As you may probably know, St. Vincent de Paul is an organization that tries to help the most needy among us, those who are marginalized in the community, providing food, clothing. Some of us may take for granted. With the help of, uh, many of our sponsors, we are able to provide this service over the years. It would be difficult to do that without the support of many of our sponsors. Planet Fitness is one of our most ardent sponsors. They have been helping raise awareness to the needs of the poor in our neighborhoods. They organize food drives in their gym, collecting groceries and canned goods, which then given out by our conference to needy families. We are very grateful to Planet Fitness for the support they have been giving to St. Vincent de Paul. Planet Fitness is an important part of our community, providing not only services for people to become physically fit, but also services that promote the well-being of the entire community. With the help of Planet Fitness and our other sponsors, we hope that the people we serve will feel the love and care from the community, and know that they are not alone. I pray Planet Fitness would continue to be our sponsor, a precious partner for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Next up is, um, Janesi Raimundo. I don't know if I pronounced it right. And next, and after you will be Scott Beal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council Members and Community. My name is Janess Raimundo. I am a Daly City resident. I serve as the conference president for the Society of St. Vincent de Paul at St. Augustine Catholic Church. You may know St. Vincent de Paul for its thrift stores and food pantries for the homeless. In addition to community services, St. Vincent de Paul conferences throughout San Mateo County provide person-to-person visits to the homes of the poor in our very own neighborhoods. The society serves people in need regardless of creed, ethnic, or social background, health, gender, or political opinion. We are regular people serving our neighbors in need in support of basics such as food, clothing, and housing. We are Vincentians, and we connect people of goodwill to those who need it the most. Our funds and food mostly come from the generosity of parishioners and the community. For the past seven years, our parish has partnered with Planet Fitness in Daly City for an annual holiday canned food drive with its gym members. I work with Stella, and this is the first time I've seen her in person, so it's very nice to see her. This community event is so popular with the members of Planet Fitness, it has plied our pantry with food for the entire year. We truly appreciate this partnership with the members of Planet Fitness. We hope this tradition of giving and supporting the community will continue. With more gyms, we would have an even greater reach and more awareness of the issue of poverty in our own communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Janesi. Uh, next up is Scott Beal, and after Scott will be Moises Villera? Villera? That's Scott.
Good evening, Council Members. My name is Scott Beal, and I represent the many members of UA Local 467, the plumbers, pipe fitters, and refrigeration fitters throughout San Mateo County. I'm here tonight to stand with the, the building trades in support of selecting developer J.M. McLennan. McLennan has committed to building an all-union project, and by doing so, the developer and Daly City will be investing in pathways to construction careers through state-registered apprenticeship programs. Thank you.
Scott. Next is Moises, and after Moises will be Matt Russo.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. My name is Moises Villera. I am a field representative of Cooperative Union Local 217, representing 30, approximately 38,000 carpenters across Northern California, representing 1,600-plus members across San Mateo County, including active members living in Daly City. We, the carpenters, support the proposed project of J.M. McLennan Development for the following reasons. One, McLennan, shortly the general contractors include Nor- Northern California signatory union contractors. That is important. Number two, when a responsible, Northern California carpenter, uh, responsible contractor is selected for any project, that ensures that the, that, that the workers on said projects will be earning a family, a family-supporting wage. It's essential nowadays. Three, access to medical coverage. When developers partner with responsible general contractors, it ensures that the workers in that project will have access to medical coverage, not just for themselves, but for their families as well. This is tremendously important because of the dangerous nature of the construction world. And it's important for the workers to have medical, access to medical coverage, because this, it keeps them from seeking out medical coverage from county services, which burdens taxpayers. When selecting a responsible, uh, general contractor, it supports local hire. Local hire meaning also apprentices. As far as Northern California carpenters, there's currently well over 2,100 apprentices that need those opportunities. We have not an opportunity, a labor shortage, we have an opportunity shortage. Right out of time, so I'll make it, I'll summarize. We, the carpenters, stand with the development, with the developer J.M. McLennan, and we urge the council to stand with us in selecting their proposal. The other proposal, proposal leads much to be desired. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Moises. We have Matt Russo, and after Matt will be Leonard Burgo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Matt Russo, and I'm the Business Manager of the Elevator Constructors, Local 8 of San Francisco. Before I start, Mr. Mayor, I do have to, uh, I have to commend you, as I didn't have the mayor of Daly City quoting Tupac on my bingo card for tonight. So thank you for that. We stand with the building trades in support of selecting J.M. McLennan as the developer at 1837 Juniper Osera Boulevard. J.M. McLennan has signed a project labor agreement with the building trades, which ensures that the project will be constructed all-union. Union jobs are a path to the middle class residents in the city, as well as others across the Bay Area. Union jobs are safer, in addition, offer health and welfare benefits for the workers and their families, ensuring that these families have the opportunity to enjoy a, a full and healthy life. Union apprenticeship also offer workers training in their specific fields, but also teach safety and job site readiness, ensuring that the projects are completed right the first time and on time. We believe that for these reasons, among a litany of others, that this project should be awarded to a developer who promised to perform this work all-union. I appreciate your time this evening, and I hope you strongly will consider awarding the project to McLennan. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next up is Leonard Burgo, and after Leonard will be Brian Shields.
Good evening, Council Members, Mayor, Vice Mayor. My name's Leonard Burgo. I've been a carpenter for 23 years out of Foster City. I've, uh, been a Daly City resident for the last 12. I've, uh, been a carpenter for 23 years, worked every county except for Daly City. Reason why, Daly City does not have a lot of union jobs. It'd be great to see the $65 million contract go to a union contractor, J.M.L. McLennan. And from what I'm hearing, um, the other proposal is, doesn't even come close. They're not even prepared to be here today. Wrong answers, wrong questions, no signatures. It's a no-brainer. I'm here to represent. We need union jobs, good-paying jobs. This community can use them. We have the money. Let's get it done. Let's sign with J.M.L. McLennan.
Thank you, Leonard. Next is Brian Shields, and after Brian will be Wang Tam.
Hello. Hello. Good evening. My name's Brian Shields. I'm a field representative for Carpenters Local 217, located in Foster City. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. This project site represents more than just, uh, build-out opportunity. It represents the working men and women everywhere, but specifically here in Daly City. If the project is built out with J.M. McLennan Development, it would mean a great deal more to those working men and women who reside here in Daly City. The reason would be, uh, it would mean more is because J.M. McLennan has partnered with the carpenters' union, and would mean, it would mean more that on the, it would mean that in every phase of this construction development, that it would be built-union. And I am proud to stand here with my union brothers and sisters from all different trades. Honest to God, it's, uh, fantastic to be able to get behind a developer and know that there's momentum there, because the people of the community that you guys represent, uh, are standing here telling you exactly what it is that we see. Day in, day out, this is what we deal with. Day in, day out, we talk to developers. Day in, day out, we're in city council meetings. And day in, day out, I wish I had a developer that I could stand behind like this. J.M. McLennan is the right choice for this community. He brings a versatile, uh, hotel, event center, and gym. The, uh, the hotel that you guys have asked for, he's delivered. The, uh, um, the signature with, uh, with the unions, he's delivered. And every single checkbox that has been asked of him, he's delivered. He's even made it versatile, where it's not only just a gym, but it's a, uh, fitness center, but it's also a hotel. There's residence. He's gonna sign with Local 2, which will put union jobs making good livable wage right here in Daly City. I just wanted to say that a bird in hand is worth two in the bush. Thank you.
Brian. Next is Wang Tam, and after Wang will be Juan Espinoza.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Council Member. My name is Wang Tam from, uh, Local 217, Carpenter Union. So, um, I'm strongly support with, uh, J.M. McLennan, 'cause he supports the local hiring, apprenticeships program, and our healthcare. So, the healthcare, not just only me, my family needed too. So, um, apprenticeships program is good to bring up all this young fellow from the, um, from the beginning to the job, right? So, local hiring is reducing all these greenhouse gases and reducing traffic. So, this is really one that's important to, to inputting the, um, the developer in this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Wang. Next up is Juan Espinoza, and then after Juan is, uh, Mr. Thomas Norris.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, Members of Staff, and, uh, Members of the Community. My name is Juan Espinoza. I'm a field representative at Local 217. All of my, uh, brothers here already talked about the different- All of my brothers here already talked about the different topics that we wanted to present to you. One thing that I wanted to say is, Mr. McLennan, as soon as, soon after he came to you guys and he said that he was going to go and talk to labor and sign an agreement, he did it. So he committed to you guys, and then he came and signed the agreement with us and with the building trades. Not just signing the agreement, he's also creating opportunities for, as you know, not everybody's made to go to college. He's creating opportunities for high school graduates, you know, for apprenticeship programs. We have an apprenticeship program. We have four different schools in Northern California, just the carpenters. And there's different pathways for people to go through the trades. So it was, it was a really good feeling having Mr. McLennan come to our office and say, hey, let's talk. I want to sign the agreement. He said, show me what you got, and then let me read it, and then I'll come back to you. He made no changes. He said, yeah, I agree. Here's the signature. So what more can we ask for? He's bringing everything he's promising. So I'm in support of him, and I urge you guys to please approve and accept his offer for this development. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Juan. So next speaker is Mr. Norris, and after Mr. Norris is Isabel Pardo.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Some people may know, and some may actually remember, that my partners and I were the first ones to build a project on Unipro Serra. We built the JS Office Building at the south end of the corridor. We wanted to build a three-story building, but the city said, no, this is going to be the next commercial area for Daly City. And so we built seven stories, 53,000 square feet. We're talking about a project today after the entire corridor has been built. So there's not a lot of risk at this point. There was nothing built when we built there. We did a leap of faith. We believed in Daly City, and we built a flagship out there. I guess I'm telling you this because it's always been in the plan that from one end of the corridor to the other, it would be high-end development, and it's always been in the plan that a hotel, and a convention center, and an entertainment center, a place where we can hold events in Daly City could be there. How many wedding receptions, baptisms, quinceañeras, bar mitzvahs, testimonial dinners have been taken out of town from Daly City because we've just never had the space? Now we will have that. We will finish the corridor the way it's been planned for the last almost 40 years. And with $1,600,000 projected coming into the city every year for other things, we're not going to have to struggle with DCPLAs working very hard to raise money to support the libraries. I was a rec later in Daly City when I went to college in the '70s and '80s. We ran 21 playgrounds, gyms, and locations for the kids. Took them all over. Now we have a handful, and most of our projects are fee-based. This money will go a long way to bring back the quality of life in Daly City that our citizens need and deserve. And over 33 years, at $1,600,000, that's over $50 million. And I picked 33 years because that's when we took the leap of faith, 33 years ago. And it wasn't that long ago. So the people that sit in your seats 33 years from now will probably be very grateful that you made the right choice and supported the McLennan project. Thank you.
Next up is Isabel Pardo, and after Isabel is Anthony Viscuso.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am, my name is Isabel Pardo, and I'm one of those apprentices that's with Union Carpenters 217. And I'm here in support of Bob McLennan Development, who has signed a letter of intent for all-union labor. And this project, projects like this would cultivate the workforce and give prevailing wage to my brothers and sisters. And as well, it would give proximity of the workers to the families and their kids in specific. And also, this would give the wages to people that live here in Daly City, and also give taxes to the city and give me the opportunity to learn and work here in the community. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Isabel Pardo. Next up is Anthony Viscuso.
Can you guys hear me without the microphone? Yeah, I think you can. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. My name is Anthony Viscuso, and I'm a business agent for Local 16 Heat and Frost Insulators. And I represent approximately 700 members, many of which who live in San Mateo County and right here in Daly City. I also want to let you know that, sorry, I lost my spot there. I also represent non-union construction workers by examining their job sites for wage theft, unfair labor practices, and mistreatment of workers. Unions exist to improve the lives of workers everywhere. When unions negotiate better wages and benefits, non-union contractors are forced to follow suit. We believe that every worker has the right to go to a job free from exploitation, intimidation, and fear of retaliation. We actively monitor jobs, we actively monitor our job sites for quality, safety, and employer accountability for wage and benefit compliance. We believe in producing the highest skilled workers anywhere, which is why we spend close to $50,000 on each apprentice we train. We also provide additional classes for journey persons who want to improve their skills and to train newly organized members on any skills they might not have, they might not have learned yet. By choosing J.M. McLennan, who already has signed an agreement to build 100% union, you are creating the opportunity for new apprentices to find a career path to the middle class and creating the opportunity for us to organize new members that are currently being exploited. We are at a time in history when 70% of workers favor unions. Please choose a builder who will stand by working families. Please choose J.M. McLennan to develop this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anthony. And at this time, I'd like to hand it over to our staff Well, we have two on the virtual side.
One caller by phone. There you go. Please press star six to unmute. Caller by phone.
Hello, yes. My name is John Daly, and I wanted to come in on this project. I've actually come in this on it before. I'm all for the union. Love the union. In fact, many of the family members here, keepers, longshoremen, carpenters, and so forth, love the work that you guys do, love to support you. Worried about the project, really concerned about the project, about the residencies, the apartments, the convention center. I mean, I think it's a capacity of like 3,000 for the convention center and the hotel. I was actually online just now about Hampton down the block. Hampton's a pipe store, I think. And there's vacancy for tomorrow. So the vacancy rate there at Hampton right now. So something to consider as well. Recently, the city of San Francisco came out with a report. There's 40,000, that's 40,000 vacant homes in San Francisco. 20% of all office space is available as well, so there's a vacancy there. Too close to BART, I think. I mean, BART trains are loud, and they're running until midnight. I'm thinking about a different project. I'm thinking more of like maybe a mental health clinic, perhaps. Maybe an auditorium for the kids to play basketball or something like that. But I'm thinking apartment or hotel. I don't know. I mean, BART trains are really loud. I don't know if somebody wants to go up there for maybe an hour to see how those trains aren't coming in and out of BART. Every time a BART train comes from Colma to Daly City, it hits the horn. The reason why it hits the horn, it wants to make sure that nobody's on the track. So it's warning the passengers that it's coming. So, I mean, that's right near, that horn is going to be going to midnight. That's right near the event center or the residence or whatever it may be. Also, Live Nation, I think there was mention of Live Nation. Live Nation wants to book venues, very large venues. So they want to do the Chase Center.
Two minutes have been reached.
And so just something to consider about what we're going to build up there. But love the union. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Last called speaker we have is Nels.
Hi, my name is Nels Delander. I'm a unit carpenter of San Mateo County and a resident of Daly City. I'm in support of J.M. McLennan. We need more work in our own cities where we don't have to always go far away for our jobs. I would like to also be able to work at this site, even though I don't be able to get a part of this project. I would like to have my fellow brothers and sisters have the opportunity to work locally. I've been a unit carpenter for 15 years, and it gave me a lot of opportunity with honest living, healthcare, prevailing wage, pension, annuity, where other non-union contractors would not. I hope we go 100% with this union, with this project, with J.M. McLennan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
All right. Can I have a motion to close? Public comment, please.
Motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we have a council determination. What is it, what will be the process?
I think it's really just for the council to deliberate and make a determination. And again, the next step would be, once the council picks a development team, we'll work offline to create an exclusive negotiating agreement that will come back to the council.
So at this time, I'd like to open up to my council, so a council member, Sylvester.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. This question is for staff. When you create residences, what is our ordinance, the city ordinance, for the amount of allocation for units to be put aside for affordability and low income?
So we have two different requirements based on the tenure type. So if it's rental, we require 10% of the units be affordable to incomes of 70% area median income or lower. For ownership projects, we require 20% of the units be made affordable to incomes of 120% area median income or lower.
Thank you. My next question is, Rena, how are our arena numbers?
Well, we currently can satisfy the current housing element. We are working on our next housing cycle. The next cycle will require the city to plan for 4,280 units. At this point in time, we're close to being able to put those on paper, but I don't think we have the full amount yet. So staff is scrambling to find housing sites in the city.
Do we have any other hotels in the pipeline for Daly City?
We have two entitled hotels. As L.F. George team had acknowledged, they have a site on Ceremonie Boulevard that includes 323 residential units, as well as a pad for a hotel. Those were entitled. Those have zoning entitlements. However, we don't have any active building permits for that site. Ceremonie Shopping Center also has an entitled hotel. I think for, I might get the numbers wrong, but I think somewhere in the 100 and something range, 150 hotel rooms. That one went as far as design review and actually building permits middle, and they've been requesting to renew their building permits. My understanding in conversations with representatives from the shopping center is that the development team has changed over. There is still a lot of interest in creating a hotel at the shopping center, so it's not dead. But as we've been talking about earlier, obviously, the hotel industry did take a big hit. But it is interesting to note that Ceremonie Shopping Center hasn't abandoned the idea or tried to create new plans for the site where the hotel would be. So we do think there's still some interest for hotel in Daly City.
Thank you, Ms. Tatum. I have the questions for the developers. We'll start off with Mr. McLennan. McLennan, I heard mention of a 30,000-foot conference center. I'm wondering, where are folks who attend, like, say, Live Nation, where are they going to park?
Being on the BART line gives it a real unique opportunity, right? That there isn't an event center anywhere in the Bay Area that's next to mass transit. So the parking structure that's there would probably be the primary spot for parking. And I'm sure that the owner of the parking, since it's not part of the agreement for the hotel, that they would charge for parking. And I would think it'd be a pretty good profit center for them.
Parking. Okay. I'd like to ask this. Thank you, Mr. McLennan. That's all I have. I'd like to ask the same question of Mr. Lamb. Mr. Green, how are you, sir? My question I have is parking for 300 units, I believe.
Yes. Well, the parking will be within the project. The parking that is provided, I believe, will be under the building, a portion of it.
Underground, so I would assume underground means.
It's a basement, ex-basement, yes.
Excavation.
It's a basement level, so some soil will have to be removed, yes.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Green. For staff, has planning, Mr. Green? I'll take the microphone. Thank you. Ms. Tatum, has staff determined the allocation of parking units based upon the number of units proposed?
We haven't done a calculation again. So this is selecting a developer. There's clearly a lengthy entitlement process that will occur after this. What I can tell you is that the parking garages that were developed as part of DC Station, there is an agreement that would allocate 350 parking stalls for a hotel development.
Okay, 350 stalls for hotel development.
It does, and maybe Rose can actually help me out with this. But it does specify a hotel, but it does have fallback language in the event that it's an alternate use. So we will have to revisit that parking easement.
Okay, so have both developers been advised of this possibility? I'm looking about cost, because I get that excavation is going to cost some money. But if there's a possibility that utilization of 350 spots in a nearby adjacent building might be available, has that been brought to the attention of both developers?
Yes, that was in the announcement for the RFP. It was explained that there was access to 350 parking stalls.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvester. Councilmember Sylvester? Any other comments from my colleagues?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have no further questions, but I do have some comments. So I tried to work up pros and cons. And as I heard earlier, when we first started out on the RFP, what Daly City was looking for is a hotel. Basically, we hoped to, we raised our TOT in the hopes to get more revenue for the city. Now, given the recent fluid and dynamic problem that we had, and that was with the pandemic, there was no certainty as to guarantee an occupancy rate, because I believe we had this conversation before, at least a minimum of three years ago, as we move forward. What is it that we are looking for? Now, when I first heard about the McLennan project, Now, when I first heard about the, uh, McClellan project, uh, they did somewhat of a hybrid, and I think that was a marvel idea, outstanding idea, to kind of get the best of both worlds. But yet, on the other hand, I'm thinking about the community in the sense of residents that will become stable in Daly City. There is no guarantee about, as far as I'm concerned, about a hotel, uh, in the years to come. There's no guarantee. We would love a hotel, but to me, there's no guarantee. But on the other hand, having residences, which is going to bring more of a community to Daly City and to help make them stable. What I'm leading towards is I also look at the surrounding areas. One of the surrounding areas which we hope to have modifications done is March Bank Park. Now, folks coming into a hotel, coming to an event, they'll pay their TOT, but then they're transient, they'll just leave. With all the renovations to come in the future to March Bank Park, I think the residents would appreciate that additional amenity and perhaps, uh, and use March Bank Park. Um, I think it works both ways for the hotel and the residents about Bart being so close, transit-oriented development, which is, uh, a, a, a big plus. So, I, I, I'm kind of torn, because I wish the developers, i-if, if we can say, both developers get together, build something, and you both, uh, make something from it, I think that would be the, the best of both worlds, but unfortunately, we as a council tonight is going to have to make a, a decision. Daly City is a union town, and I agree. I, when I worked before, I was part of a union, and being part of a union is what, uh, provides you great benefits. I've heard it over and over tonight. At the same time, I believe that if union is going to be a part of it, that's a major part of it, however, we should not overlook the PLA, Project Labor Agreement, Prevailing Wage Agreement. So if you are non-union, you're going to get prevailing wage, which I see in the term sheet was offered. So, I, you know, I, 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 I'm kind of, uh, both ways. 100% is good, but 95% on something that is not signed yet, uh, I don't know if we can make it conditional that it be signed prior. So, that's where I'm at. So those are my comments, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ma'am, thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Um, are there any other comments, questions? Seeing none, I guess we can go ahead.
I do, I do. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Manalo.
I'll go after you, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Vice Mayor, Bueno Tor.
So my, the, the idea of a project labor agreement, um, I think that's, uh, that's huge. And my question, though, is, how secure can we, um, be when there is a project labor agreement? This is what I mean. So, what, and just hypothetically speaking, what would happen in the event, and this is not, nothing against you, Bob, I'm just trying to look out for the bench, best interest, if there's been a breach in the project labor agreement? In other words, the developer says, "I'm going to do all union," but then it doesn't happen, all right? So my question is, um, if there has been a breach in that respect, what happens to the project? That's number one. And number two, um, what, if any, do we have authority, um, to make the project, um, contingent upon a project agreement, uh, actually being fulfilled? So I understand the signing, but what if it were, we're in a situation where these promises are not met, and, um, and it's not built all uni, on all union as, as promised? That's, that's my question. And what involvement in the city can we have to secure the terms of the agreement is actually moving forward?
I'm, I'm probably going to rely quite a bit on the city attorney here, but I'll, I'll try to field it and, and then throw it over her way. Uh, my understanding is, so in the E&amp;A process, that's where we create deal terms for disposition and development agreement, uh, for the site. I believe the city council can make that a deal term and make that a requirement. What I probably can't answer is what happens if there's, uh, failure to meet that requirement, so I'll pass it over.
So in terms of the existing labor, um, peace agreement, uh, that, the city is not a party to that, uh, so we do rely, um, on the good faith efforts to have that agreement in place, which we can look at when we're looking at an exclusive negotiating agreement. However, the city themselves cannot be a party to the labor peace agreement, and we've have had them in development agreements in the past, and unfortunately, without giving a, an elaborate legal opinion, they have not been enforceable. They have been used for purposes of good faith and been making that public appearance, but it, that does not necessarily mean we can enforce that agreement if there are breaches in place. So, um, I believe Vice Mayor, excuse me, um, Councilmember Manalo had suggested the good faith efforts in looking at how we would assure that these agreements would be in place for the unions, and it is an agreement between the private parties. But we can't say for certain that the city can enforce it or, uh, make it a condition of a project completion.
Right, so you, you, you said we cannot make it a condition, or you can?
So we've had made them conditions in the past, Vice Mayor, but, uh, they have not been enforceable.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
Can we take a moment?
Well, then, okay, so, so who would enfor, if, if we can't enforce it, who would enforce it?
It would be the enforceability of the parties. So who was ever engaged in the labor har- harmony agreement, meaning the unions and the developer?
I see.
Would you like to comment? Go ahead. Yeah.
Thank you. Again, my name is Juan, I'm with the, uh, Juan Espinoza, with the carpenters, and my colleague Bart, he's here with the building trades. But, uh, this, uh, project, project labor agreement is a signed document, it's a legal document that we enforce, the unions enforce. There is a penalty, so it's, it's a lot of money that they're going to lose if they don't, if they don't follow with it. Does that answer your question?
So, um, so are you saying each individual union would enforce it, or do you, all collectively?
All collectively, the, the building trades, yes. If, it, it creates a damage to all of us, so then, that's why I'm saying, it, it's a lot of money that they're going to lose if they don't follow through.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity.
Bart Pantoja, business, uh, building trades. Juan said it very well, it's a contract. You know, we're in contracting. Our employers are contractors, they sign a contract to build the development. If they don't build the development, then they will be basically sued for liquidated damages, right? Because they signed a contract. So, uh, Bob signed a contract with unions to build all union, we have, we have a contract. You know, um, the good faith, uh, requirement that, uh, there's labor peace and labor harmony, fantastic, but we will, we will enforce our, our contract. Yeah, and all the unions sign off on it, so we're, it's, it's a court, uh, a collaborative effort, and it's been longstanding for decades, uh, project labor agreements.
Councilmember, are you finished?
Yeah.
Councilmember Giovanni.
Bart, before you leave, so also, it's my, also my understanding with labor, they also oversee and come to the sites and visit to make sure that everything is insured, is that correct?
Yes, and ultimately with, with the, an agreement, we know that everybody on the project is union, so really, we, we rarely have to go to the job.
Right.
It's actually, as, uh, Mr. Viscuzio mentioned, he actually checks more on non-union contractors if they're being violated. Here's the problem with prevailing wage, it was mentioned earlier.
Correct.
Prevailing wage is good, but there is no actual enforcement and compliance, other than people implementing to the DIR. Unless someone says, says that they've been violated in their wages, can anything be done? Under an agreement where everything's union, we have trust funds, we have a lot of entities that, you know, pay stubs are required, you know, under prevailing wage, you have to, so what happens is people can get wage theft under prevailing wage, basically. Someone can go to work for, you know, eight hours, get paid, actually go to work for 10 hours and only get paid eight, because they're making extra prevailing wage. And these kind of deals happen with, um, low road contractors. And the thing is, with the agreement with the unions, there are no low road contractors, you know, we, we have, uh, established, uh, pay wa, pay wage scales, everything's on the state, um, that you can't cheat, basically, so.
And just elaborate as well, um, just for my colleagues as well, it's always my understanding that, that when you use signatory contractors, that they also, you, you know signatory contractors, and if they've chosen a signatory contractor, then that's, that's another solid point, right?
Yeah, exactly, every, every contractor's a union contractor, and I mean, uh, every one of our affiliate unions have probably 100 signatories in their area that are going to probably bid on the project with the, as the carpenters mentioned, they have general, uh, signatory, general contractors are going to be looking to bid the project, so it's very competitive.
Yeah, it prevents wage theft and also gives health benefits, correct?
Yeah, it's all, it, what's great about, well, also, from my, my own experience, as a union member, I've provided for my, well, ex-wife now, but my wife and four kids, all under, on my wages and my, my healthcare as a union worker, so yes, families will be, families will get healthcare, not just the workers.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Pantoja, uh, thank you for the additional information. You had liberty to provide us what the liquidated, liquidated damages, what percentage or, uh, what you may call specific performance?
So to date, no one's ever backed out of a PLA. Yeah.
So, do we...
Every contract we've ever had across, well, Northern California, no, no developer contractors actually backed out of it. So, I can give you an example, what happens when a contractor backs out of a contract, but that, it has nothing to do with the union, it's just, if a contractor signed to get a certain amount of work performed, they don't do it, the, whoever subcontracted them, they have to pay whatever cost and times it was for them to get somebody else, you know, it's, so it, it varies, all depends. If they're at 90% completed the job and they back out, then they have to pay the last 10%, whether they do the work or not, I mean. But again, uh, project labor agreements with the San Mateo County and across Northern California, no one's, uh, backed out of one yet.
Okay, I, I, I understand that, I, 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 you know, I just need a firm answer. If no one's backed out, but in case you have someone that does back out, what is the maximum percentage of the liquidated damages that would be assessed to the developer?
There's no precedence, there's, there's no amount.
3%?
No.
5%?
It, it all depends on how many hours were yet to be worked. Again, it's, uh, yeah, it's, it would go to litigation, and it would be something that would be discussed, and again, there's no precedence for that, so I couldn't give you a number.
All right, thank you so much, because, you know, I know the city cannot get involved in the negotiations between two parties, the contractors and the unions. The fact is, we're looking for exclusive negotiation agreement. So, what I did is, I, I took a roundabout figure, let's just say $25 million to build a piece of property. I'm, I, you know, I just pulled that out of thin air, and liquidated damages is 10%. So what's to prevent a developer saying, "I'll pay the 2.5 million and I won't use union at all," and subsequently save maybe 5 to 8 million?
I understand, I understand.
Oh, 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 okay. What I'm saying is the project costs 25 million. Hours and cost, construction, and liquidated damages, I took a figure of 10%. Multiply 10% times 25 million, that would be $2.5 million. So what would prevent a developer saying, "I'm just going to, uh, back out of this contract, I will pay you the 2.5 million and hire non-union at $5 million less?"
If I may?
Yes, please.
We have a grievance procedure, and, uh, if the developer decides to build a non-union, they have to pay those workers the non-union wages. On top of that, they have to pay us all the hours that those, that, that our union members didn't work because they use non-union. So it's, it, it, it's, it's not a percentage, it's, it's, they lose a lot of money.
Okay, okay, yeah, so basically...
Does that answer your question?
It's kind of, it's getting to, into more specifics, into, uh, what would be the penalty to the developer, and that's what I'm looking for.
Right. And, and we're, uh, we're the building trades, so there's multiple trades here, so everybody's got their own, uh, grievance procedure.
Okay.
In, in our case, is, is that.
Thank you.
Mr. Sylvester, the other side of that is, I've been involved on both sides, they would shut that job down. There is no way people are going to go over that, that picket line, right? It would be an absolute disaster for the city and for me. So, whether, the money is one thing, yes, you're absolutely right, you're going to weigh it, right? If I can save two and a half million, I'm going to certainly look at it. But, you're not going to get it built, not in this town.
Yeah, there's a term they call it, I forgot, a, a union term where they do the picket, is the...
Boycott or...
No, it's more than boycott, it's a certain term.
So, and, and to that point...
Pass in the line?
So, into the, so into that point...
Yeah.
An agreement, so there's give and take in an agreement, right? When you sign a contract, whether you're buying a car or whatever, as you sign a contract, the, the agreement is that there will be no, uh, labor unrest on that project until the project moves. It, it constantly progresses, there's no slowdowns, no, there's no actions, no picket, and no type of labor unrest. Any issues that may happen with a, any one of the subcontractors, uh, or an employees or anything, everything's settled through grievance procedure, the work continues, there's no work stoppage. That's, that is the benefit of an agreement, you know, that's why these, it's been proven these agreements finish, you know, on time and on budget, because, one, the union contractors are all the, the top of their game, they're all the ones that do the big projects, you're talking about concrete and steel, you're talking about multiple stories, they're the ones that do it, and they do it well. So with no hindrances, they're going to get it done. Thank you.
Um, any other comments? Councilmember Manalo?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, so when I look at the site and, um, what was intended for the pad, uh, I know we raised the TOT tax for a reason, and, uh, we raised it because, you know, we, um, anticipated a hotel on the site. Um, I, I mean, weighing both projects and looking at it, we do see the need for housing, um, in the Bay Area. But when I look at the corridor of that commercial corridor, um, I think it's, you know, I think it's more on a commercial, um, just a commercial path. If you, if we look at the movie theater being there, if we see that, you know, um, there's, um, a hotel and a convention center, I feel like that whole area, that street is kind of a commercial corridor, and that's how I, I, I see it right now, and I, I mean, I'm looking at both aspects where obviously there is a need for housing, but when I see, um, or envision that area, it's more of, as mentioned, we don't have the economic drivers as usually other cities have. And so I've heard about the economic forecast and how much dollars are coming in, um, and then also, I think from the onset, um, uh, my question was around, really around the, the labor and the local labor, um, and also the operation side of it. I mean, I, I... I mean, I grew up in Daly City, I think, and it's so important to have local jobs that are right within the communities you live in. And so, looking at the both projects, I think, you know, both brought very unique aspects to them, right? A residential, a ground-for retail, but this project that has a hotel, a convention center, and also ensuring that the workers are local, both operation and construction, is really important. I think that it's hard to get, it's really, the time right now is we need to have these good-paying jobs for the community, especially around what we see today. And so I, you know, this is not an easy decision because I'm a housing advocate, right? And I want to see more housing, but given where this, given the whole pieces of the project that I see to date, I am inclined to motion for the hotel project with a convention center this evening.
I'd like to second that.
Are there any other discussion? All right, so we have a motion for J. M. McLennan. All those in favor say aye.
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 Actually, can we have a roll call vote on this? Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Ms. City Clerk, I'll hand it over to you, roll call vote.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
No.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rock?
Aye. Right, thank you for that fruitful discussion, and we're moving along on this project. Moving on to item number 13, parking variance for daycare center at 92 Hill Street, variance V A R C dash five dash 22 dash one five nine six two. And I'll hand it over to Mr. Patton.
92 Hill. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. The next item for you this evening is the parking variance for 92 Hill Street. The applicant proposes to operate a daycare center, serving up to 80 children with eight staff members. The most recent use of this space was a church and associated classrooms. The proposal involves the removal of four onsite parking stalls in order to provide an outdoor play area. Their use requires 16 parking stalls per the Daly City parking ordinance. Since four stalls will remain onsite, the applicant is requesting a variance for 12 parking stalls. The subject property is located on the west side of Hill Street, between Washington Street and West Market Street, a one-quarter mile walk from the Colma BART station. Minor interior tenant improvements will be made while the floor plans remain unchanged. The proposed site plan indicates that four of the eight existing onsite parking stalls will be converted to an outdoor play area. Additionally, striping improvements will be made to accommodate 88 accessible pathways and a parking stall. This photo shows the existing building and parking area. Sorry, this photo. And here's a photo of the adjacent property to the right, which, as you can see, has a similar layout with parking up front of the building. This project is exempt from CEQA in accordance with Section 15601 exemptions. Staff finds that the project is consistent with the city's general plan in that granting the variance provides an incentive to the commercial development and a benefit to the community by providing daycare within close vicinity to a major public transit hub. Staff feels that providing an outdoor play area for the children provides a benefit that outweighs the loss of four onsite parking stalls. There are similar uses operating on adjacent properties. The project is in accordance with Chapter 1746 of the Daly City Municipal Code. The project is exempt from CEQA per Section 15601 of the CEQA guidelines. Sorry. And staff recommends approval of the variance for 92 Hill Street, and this completes staff's presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Patton. At this time, I'd like to open up to questions, comments from my colleagues.
Just, I just want to make a comment, I think it's great that the out, there's a now expanded, is that a play area for the children as well? So that's great, right? So that gives them more areas, because they didn't have one before, did it, in that area?
No, so this is the first time that they're opening as a daycare center. Actually, they have opened within, I think, the last month or so, but without the parking variance approved. But the parking variance is going to allow them to remove four of the existing onsite parking spaces in favor of the outdoor play area.
So this does give them enough areas so they can do and provide and whatever? I know it's been a little long haul, but I'm glad we're here today with this and that we need childcare in our city. So, and plus, this will give them, how long will it take them to move from here to opening?
So I don't, I believe the construction, the interior tenant improvements have already been completed. And the applicant is here who could speak on that. But if they have not already opened for the fewer number of children, they are on the route to opening. So as soon as they can have approval of the variance, have the appeal period complete, they can open up their outdoor play area and have a larger number of children.
Okay, I'd like to thank the applicant for bringing childcare to Daly City because it's really needed, really needed. We never have enough, so to thank them and then that they provided childcare, what ages?
I think it's a variety of ages, and I'm not sure.
Not trying to promote childcare, but it's a good idea to have, y'all gotta have playground. So thank you, thank you, Brian, thank you for working so hard on this as well. And thank you for everyone that you worked with, with the applicant, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Are there other questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Right, Councilmember?
Thank you so much. I think if the parking variance is going to help the daycare center, then for me, it's a no-brainer. Definitely important to have more access to childcare opportunities in the city of Daly City. So thank you very much.
Great. At this time, we'll open up for a public comment, motion?
Second.
One second. All those, no speaker cards? Okay, so with that, can we get, oh, motion to close, I guess?
Motion to close.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, adopted resolution, can I get a motion to adopt the resolution by roll call vote?
Motion to adopt resolution by?
Second.
All right, Ms. City Clerk.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Patton, on to item number 14, parking variance for restaurant use at 6540 Mission Street, variance V A R C dash five dash 22 dash one five six eight zero. And handing it back to you.
All right, thank you. So the next item for you is also a parking variance. This is for 6540 Mission Street. The applicant is proposing to expand the existing restaurant, which currently serves up to 12 dine-in patrons, and they're expanding to 39. I'm sorry, am I in the right place here? So go ahead and close this out. Sorry, excuse me.
Third one down from the top on the right.
Thank you. All right, so. All right, so there are currently five parking stalls at the rear of the building. The expanded dining area would require 13 parking stalls. The applicant is requesting a variance for eight stalls. While the expansion would increase the demand for onsite parking, the project would create a more viable restaurant use and make the site more compatible with the adjacent uses. The subject property is located on the west side of Mission Street, between Theta Avenue and Vista Grande Avenue. The proposed floor plan indicates an expanded dining area to accommodate 39 dine-in patrons. The project is exempt from CEQA in accordance with Section 15601 exemptions. And staff finds that the project is consistent with the city's general plan in that granting the variance provides an incentive to commercial development. And there are similar uses on adjacent properties. The project is in accordance with Chapter 1746 of the Daly City Municipal Code. Staff recommends approval of the variance for 6540 Mission, and that completes this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Are there any questions, Councilmember Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that, you know, given the request for the parking variance and it's so close to transit, right there in the top of the hill area, I think, yeah, I'm in favor of approving the parking variance, especially since, you know, it's going to help a local business restaurant right there where there's more options for community members, right there in the area at top of the hill. So given the bus lines that are right there and the BART station, I'm in favor of the variance, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So I just want to say, Mr. Patton, to the restaurant, it's nice to see that even right after COVID, that obviously there's a need to expand a small business. So, I mean, I have to agree, we'd be supportive of our small business in our area, and it looks like there's a need for people to dine in, that's fabulous news, so. I'm in support as well.
Any other? I'd like to open up to public comment, a motion to open the public comment? Move?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So first up, we have Federico Cadido.
Good evening, guys, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, and this is my first time in this. And good evening, everyone in here. I'm one of the owners of King's Pizzeria. We are three owners. I'm going to introduce a little bit of myself, my name is Federico Cadido. King's Pizzeria becoming a reality June 14, 2022. I have lived most of my life in Daly City. Attained my junior year in Jefferson High School, came from Brazil at the age of 17, and worked at a simple, a small pizzeria at the same time when I attended school. Living in Daly City was, I was able to meet people from all over the world with different lifestyles, culture, food, religion, and beliefs. And that's what makes Daly City a unique city to live, bringing everyone together. I'm sure we can all look around and we can all know someone from a different part of the world. King's Pizzeria, it is a family-owned Brazilian restaurant where guests will be able to try some of our unique dishes, pizzas with boiled eggs, corns, chocolate pizzas, meat dishes, chicken plates, acai bowls, and many more different plates. And not mentioning my mother's best plant ever. With the variant, we are asking today, it would give us a huge impact. Representing Daly City and bringing more business to our community. We would like to know visitors in Daly City, they have other places to come and enjoy in our own city. You don't have to travel to any other city. Yeah, we just want to be able to be part of the community, doing what we love, serving a great food with a great environment. Our city doesn't have to travel anywhere to get a great food with a nice place to eat and sit down. Yeah, and just come and enjoy and try our food, thank you very much.
Thank you, Federico. Next up, we have Suil Shatara.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers, thank you. I happen to be the architect, and I was representing the last project as well. But I guess, you know, this is a unique pizzeria, it's more Brazilian-based. I don't know if you wanted to say that, but let me say that. Also, they're actually looking to get 49 seats. There are some technicalities why we got 39 seats, but I just wanted to make that a public comment, if there is any way to support the 49 seats, and I'm sure planning staff is up in arms because I said this, but if we could get additional seating at this location, because we're limited to 49 as a cap. There's a lot of unused parking across the street. That big housing development has no commercial facility in it. Parking spaces in front are usually vacant. If there's any way we can support them, I will encourage you, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Next is Adeline Sanchez.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. My name is Adeline Sanchez, and I'm here to support my family in our newly family-owned Brazilian-American restaurant, King's West Cosby Serie, to re-grant it the parking variance in order to seat and serve more customers in our community. A few points I'd like to address to help you come to a fair decision. The Bay Area in general, as well, as we know, is a bit cramped. But luckily, in Daly City, and specifically around the location of the restaurant, 6540 Mission Street, we're not limited to the parking, as we have assigned restaurant parking spaces and have plenty of public street parking around the area, unlike San Francisco. However, things have changed in our use of transportation. We have more options such as carpool, ride share, walking, biking, scooters. hence decreasing traffic congestion and decreasing the need of more parking spaces for King's West Coast Pizzeria. Even at full capacity, our restaurant parking does not fill up. Here in the Bay Area is common for people to carpool, to use ride share like Uber or Lyft, use zipcar, walk, bike, and use customer favorite delivery app, DoorDash. Also, customers come at various times to dine, which daggers the influx of consumers dining. In addition, there is additional street parking around the restaurant location. If we want people to come to the restaurant and buy food, parking is limited. They will be incentivized to use more progressive forms of transportation that are better for our environment and decrease traffic congestion. Allowing more seats for the newly opened family-owned business would not only benefit this business, but the entire community of Daily City and local businesses. More people will come to dine in with family and friends and increase revenue for local businesses. Thank you for making the right decision and understanding the need to allow small business to thrive, waiving the additional roadblocks and allowing more daily citizens and visitors to enjoy another, to enjoy another culturally diverse restaurant here. Thank you for making Daily City a thriving city.
Thank you so much. Um, there's no more, um, public comments? Can I get a motion to close? Oh, there, there one. Okay, sorry. Thank you for.
Caller, um, or actually by, we have Sanai and I apologize if I butchered her name.
So, okay, that's been happening since the second grade, but you did well. Uh, but thank you for allowing me to speak. I, uh, I went to San Francisco State University, actually met the owner when I was seventeen. And, um, I've been residing in the East Bay, in Hercules. Um, and we commute, um, to this restaurant every other week. And I bring families from Hercules to enjoy, uh, families that are, you know, mothers, fathers with their kids. Um, and, and, uh, you know, we just wanted to say that there's a lot of love and support from the East Bay that's coming over just to eat and, uh, dine in and experience, um, the lovely family, you know, uh, ambiance that, uh, this business and these people have provided. So wanted to show some support, um, in their endeavor this evening, um, around, you know, being able to, uh, create some, uh, chances for, for people to, to park and feel comfortable, um, to, to come into, to Daily City. So you have, uh, more business coming from the East Bay on the other side of the bridge. And thank you for, uh, for giving us your ears this evening. And, uh, we hope that, you know, our words, uh, will, uh, will sway you in the, in our direction.
Okay, great. Um, there are no other comments? Can I get a motion to close, voting here?
Motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Okay.
Do you sell, like, Juana?
We do every Saturday.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to adopt by resident by roll call?
I saw a quick question. What do we do about the, they're asking for the forty-nine seats? Do they have to come back?
That's out of order. It needs to be agendaed.
May I comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Palin.
Um, so there, there was some confusion. So the planning, the zoning ordinance doesn't differentiate between forty-nine or thirty-nine or whatever number once, once we consider it a full-service restaurant. Once we conserve, consider it a full-service restaurant, it's based on the gross square footage of the, of the building area. So as far as the planning division is concerned and as far as zoning code is concerned, we're, we are not limiting it to thirty-nine versus forty-nine. Um, I think where, where the confusion may have come in is a bill, a building code ordinance that says that the occupancy rating is so many people. So if, um, the architect can work with the building division, um, the planning division would not have any issue with changing the number between thirty-nine and forty-nine.
Yeah, let, let me discuss it with building. If building is willing to accept forty-nine, I think we have the square footage for our occupant load to meet forty-nine. I think that's what we originally did. Uh, so I'm not sure, um, how building limited to thirty-nine, I, you know, there's something I missed somehow. Uh, so, but I could revisit that with, uh, Mario at, uh, building and see if we could get it back up to forty-nine. If that is the case, if you could, uh, support the forty-nine tonight as, uh, something that we could work out with building, then, uh, I would encourage that and see if planning could agree to that.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, actually, that request is out of order due to the time constraints and many folks are here. The item on the agenda is the variance right now. I think planning needs to review that information and come back before council with your request and we can consider it at that time. To, to actually bring it before council right now, I think that's dis- disingenuous.
Uh, no, and I understand that.
Thank you very much.
I brought it up, but it's something I wanna consider. I don't wanna go for another variance. We don't, we don't have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we have roll call. Vote please, Mr. City Clerk.
Ms. DiGiovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Mr. Quayvendura?
Aye.
Miss Manalum?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye. Off to item number fifteen, Appeal of Administrative Use Permit, AUP dash five dash twenty-two dash one five two eight, AT&amp;T Wireless Facility Use Permit Renewal and Modification, one thousand Crocker Avenue, Daily City APN zero zero four dash four five zero dash one three zero. And we have Brian once again.
Okay. Great, thank you. So the next item before you this evening is a appeal of a uni- uh, the administrative use permit for a wireless facility renewal and modification. On July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, the planning division approved AUP five twenty-two fifteen seven twenty-eight, which included the replacement of the site's existing eleven-foot antenna pole with four panel antennas and installing four updated antennas on a new pole located six feet to the west. On July twentieth, twenty twenty-two, an appeal was filed by Kunlau. The project is located on a wooded hillside of the Point Pacific property, just south of Crocker Avenue and east of Point Pacific Drive. The site plan shows the project site, the location of the existing ground equipment enclosure, and the existing antenna pole. This is an enlarged, enlarged site plan. Um, and you can see the existing pole to be removed and the new pole to be relocated six feet to the west. The elevation indicates that the new pole will be the same height as the existing pole to be removed. And this, the first photo here is in a photo of the existing site. And the second one is a photo simulation of the antenna pole relocated six feet to the west. The applicant's letter cited concerns about radio frequency emissions and the exposure to nearby residents due to radiation associated with wireless facilities. Staff found that the project is exempt from CEQA per section fifteen three oh two of the CEQA guidelines. The siding and design will conceal the facility and equipment area and overall blend-in with the surrounding vegetation. Maintenance or operation of the proposed wireless facility will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood or be injurious to the neighborhood or to the general welfare of the ci- city. And a provided EMF report, electromagnetic frequency report, indicates that the proposed facility will meet FCC standards. Staff recommends that the council deny their request to uphold the approval and uphold, and uphold their approval of AUP five twenty-two fifteen two seventy-eight, subject to the modified conditions and findings. And that completes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions, comments from my colleagues?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Mr. Palin, thank you for your presentation. Did you say that the recommendation is to deny the moving of the pole after the, uh, applicant has expressed radio, uh, frequency or EMF concerns?
The recommendation of the staff is to deny the appeal. The sta- the, the, the planning staff approved this at administrative level. The, we, the planning staff approved the application to move the pole six feet back in.
Got it. I got it. So basically, it, that, that thing is supposed to be moved. And he's appealing, saying, uh, citing different concerns, but you still want that pole moved?
Well, the applicant wants it moved and the sta- staff is supporting it based on the findings that we made, yes.
The applicant.
Thank you.
I just need some clarification as well. So the applicant, who is the applicant?
AT&amp;T Wireless.
They want it moved.
They want, they want to move the antenna for, uh, six feet to the west, keeping it at the same height it is now, keeping the same number of panel antennas on the pole that is now. But relocating it six feet to the west will provide better coverage area for them.
A better coverage area. So what about the, um, to the, not, I know there's not any supposedly radiation for the vegetation, but what about the, um, animals and things like that in the, that mountain? Isn't that, isn't that on San Bruno?
It's up by Point Pacific, yeah. So is that, is that, that's San Bruno Mountain?
For the environment?
Yeah.
Right? Even though I know the government says a CEQA.
FC, well, there's two different things. There's California Environmental Quality Act, which says that this type of project is, meets the, the categorical exemption. There's all, there's the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, that provides guidelines for wireless facilities and any kind of facilities that has radio frequency. And they, they provide guidelines for when it is conditionally acceptable for the general population versus, um, acceptable for someone who is working in that field. Um, and, um, they provide guidelines of, of what the levels can be standing on the ground, what the levels can be wi- within such a, so much of a vicinity. And those levels are deter- predetermined by the FCC. And the city, while we can review it and deny it based on, um, design aspects, we cannot legally deny it based on the fact that it is, that we, that we feel it's posing a electromagnetic frequency hazard because the FCC has already reviewed it and determined that it hasn't.
Correct. And I remember being a member of the public and I believe it was council member, well, Vice Mayor now, uh, Punta de Ventura was a part of, um, I believe this goes back quite a few years, the Vice Mayor, um, when we went through, um, some of this before. So a no vote is saying.
So a no vote is saying that we, that the council is upholding planning staff's decision to approve this.
Okay, so, yeah. So you're asking for a no vote?
Correct.
Instead of a yes vote for the appeal? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Cause I know we went through this a long time ago, but I was a member of the public and, uh, I remember council going through this.
Thank you. Councilmember Manalum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the one that is making the appeal present?
Vote, I believe so. Where's Mr. Falau?
No?
I thought he was here.
There's Kunlau?
Oh, with the.
Right there.
Nope. I just wanted to know, right, right there. Here.
I guess you're not present.
I guess not. Okay, well, I just wanted to know if they were present in case they wanted to.
Go ahead and open, uh, public hearing, motion to, open public, um, comment, open public hearing?
Motion.
Okay. I'll go ahead and second that.
Second, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Um, are there any comments? Seeing none, are there comments here? Okay, um, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close, second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Are there any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, can I get a motion to, um, adopt the resolution by roll call, please?
So move.
Second.
Okay. All right, Mr. City Clerk.
Ms. DiGiovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
I thought you were looking for a no vote.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is, is, is there, uh, 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 we're recalling the question. Can we make sure that we have the right question?
Right.
It really depends on what the motion is. If the, if the city council uphold the city staff's approval, then the vote would be, the, the, the city staff's recommending would be yes.
Exactly. But that wasn't the question. That wasn't the question. So I would recommend that we restate the question for clarity.
Yes, please restate and, uh, make a motion and then.
Okay, so there's a, um, a motion to deny, oh.
No.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation.
Uphold the staff's approval of the.
Okay, got it.
Which is the resolution that was the motion? Adopt resolution. I second it.
And then now we have a roll call, right?
Ms. DiGiovanni?
No.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Mr. Quayvendura?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Palin, for coming up here for three times in a row.
All right, thank you.
Off to item number sixteen, Report of Planning Commission Action Related to Zone Change, um, Z C dash zero nine dash twenty-one dash zero one five two three seven dash, or amendment, amendment to King Plaza Plan Development Zoning, PD forty-seven.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. This is a report of the Planning Commission's action on October fourth with regard to the rezoning request by the owners of King Plaza Shopping Center. As indicated in the council staff report, the owners of that shopping center have made their request for some changes in the zoning text relating to the shopping center, specifically related to delivery hours or some other items. We've included the Planning Commission's staff report as an attachment for you. Uh, you may have had a chance to review that. Uh, so there's that. There are some amendment, there's a, a request to adopt the parking management plan as it relates to the shopping center. And there's also an approval to, uh, a, a request to approve the CCNRs related to the property. For clarification, these amendments did not relate to the property that includes Classic Bowl, Classic Bowling Center property, only the, uh, King Plaza Shopping Center. So what we're doing tonight, for clarification, is reporting to you the Planning Commission's tabling of this item. On October fourth, this, uh, matter went to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission took public testimony and deliberated on the item and decided after a discussion that it would actually table the, a further discussion of the, uh, matter until such a time as more information, uh, was professionally gathered with regard to the parking management plan. And also, and public testimony contributed toward this decision until such a time as a legal matter could be resolved between the parties. They are involved in litigation. They are involved in litigation, and the Planning Commission's feelings at the October 4th meeting was that it was premature to decide on this item. So what brings us here tonight is that the city council can, according to our municipal code and according to the California Government Code, basically has, correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney, but there's three matters of action that the city council can pursue with regard to the Planning Commission's tabling of this item. They can refer the matter back to the Planning Commission for further consideration. They can accept the Planning Commission's tabling of the item and take no further action on it, on the rezoning request. Or the city council can decide that it would like to hold a public hearing on the item. So tonight is not a public hearing. In fact, it appears under the communications section of the agenda. And if the City Council so desired, we would set time and place for a public hearing at a future date and time. So that's the essence of the staff's report to you tonight. If there's any questions regarding that, of course, the Planning Division staff's available, city attorney's available, and we would be happy to answer any questions related to that.
Thank you, Michael. Open it up to my colleagues. Any questions, comments?
I'll start. I may.
Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were three different options, and one is to refer back to planning. I'm just reiterating what I've heard. Two is to accept planning's recommendation and to let it go to, to table it. Or three, to set time and date for a public hearing on this matter. All right, well, I'll just come right out and say that I would like to consider a public hearing to come back before us so that we can move on with this matter. From the information I've read, it seems to me that the purported or alleged easement is what is in question with the attorney, not the parking management plan, to which there does exist a problem there. I think in reviewing the management, parking management plan, we have time limits and we have parking spots. To my understanding, there's 326 parking spots, to which 149 are unlimited. 96 are limited to only two hours. So that takes up 243 parking spots out of a total of 326, leaving 83, not counting eight spots for disabled, not counting a few spots for trucks. I think the applicant has done so much to try to work something out, and it's very unfortunate that we have to wait for a court appearance on an easement when we're talking about we need to differentiate between a parking management plan. That is what is at stake here, not the issue about an easement. Again, I'll reiterate, I think seven years is too long, and I think the Daly City, we as a council, need to exercise police powers in the sense of determine a variance or a parking management plan, to which this is the only one that I've seen. I'm looking and I was considering the two-hour limit. Well, what's the purpose of a two-hour limit? The same purpose as if we park on a public right-of-way on the street to which there are parking meters. What is the purpose of the parking meters besides bringing in revenue? In this case, we won't be bringing in revenue for the two-hour parking, to ensure turnover. And that is the problem that exists here. So we need to ensure turnover and try this, and if it's not working, then it comes back before council if a variance is requested. But I don't like the idea of kicking the can down the road continuously. I think we need to make a decision, and I think we need to have a public hearing on this and talk about it. Thank you. My comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have to concur with Councilmember Sylvester on a lot of this. And if we were to set a time and date for a public hearing, when would we be able to do that, Michael?
Typically, what we would do is, we're at the second meeting in October. We would set time and place possibly at the next council meeting for the second city council meeting in November.
In November? Okay, because these are our only options, right? As he reiterated.
That would be the soonest we could do that.
Wait, wait. You said the second city council meeting?
Twenty-eighth.
The first city council meeting in November?
At the first city council meeting in November, we would set time and place for the second city council meeting in November. I don't have the exact dates.
Fourteenth and twenty-eighth.
Fourteenth and twenty-eighth, respectively.
So why can't we set it for a hearing on the first council meeting of November?
Could we?
You can do that, assuming there's enough time.
Okay. I think we have a lot of public comments.
Okay.
All right, so...
Motion to open public comment.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, first one up the bat is Janet Fogarty. And then after that will be Tammy Ho afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I apologize for all my squirming. I just had my knee replaced, and it's stiffened up, and that's why I'm squirming. I'm Janet Fogarty. I am the land use attorney for the owners of King Plaza Center, which are Mr. and Mrs. Ho, who are here this evening. And I thank you all for working so hard tonight, and I want to also thank the staff for working so hard to bring this forward and to analyze it and to give you good recommendations about it. The task tonight, as Councilmember Sylvester pointed out, is to determine whether or not you, as a city council, are going to use your powers, of police powers, to determine what the future of parking is going to be at King Plaza Center. I have to tell you that the city council approved this plan development in 1998, long before any of you were on the council. And they did it granting a 20% parking discount to the bowling alley. And they imposed conditions as a means of trying to accommodate the parking that they knew was going to be an issue at King Plaza Center. Those conditions have never been met, never been met, since 1998. There's a certificate of compliance to split the law, but what the certificate of compliance says is, it is subject to conformity with the zoning regulations, which, as I reiterate, have never been met. So now is the time to determine if those conditions of approval that that council in 1998 thought would solve the parking problem will solve the parking problem. And if it doesn't work, I guess it can be looked at again. But we know that doing nothing has not solved the parking problem. It's just gotten worse and worse and worse, to the detriment of all of the businesses in King Plaza Center, including the bowling alley. So we urge you tonight to schedule this for the next available council meeting so that we can move on and try to solve this problem for the people around the shopping center, the people who go to the businesses in the shopping center, and the people who own those businesses in the shopping center. So thank you very much. I would ask, and I think you already said this, that Mrs. Ho would be next to speak. She is one of the owners, along with her husband, of the shopping center. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Janet. We have Tammy Ho next, and then after Tammy, we'll have Gaber Shalabi.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council member. My name is Tammy Ho. I am the owner of the King Plaza Center. I have a number of business at King Plaza. They serve a large part of population in Daly City. And also, Manila Market, Manila supermarket, also is the large, serve, big, a large Asian community. And I have been, receive all the call, a lot of call from my tenant complaint, their customer cannot find parking. If their customer, they have a hard time finding parking, then they have to go to other supermarket to shop. And I own majority, the King Plaza, their parking space land. It's about, I would say, 95% of their parking space land, I owned it. And since I received the complaint, I tried very hard to sit down and work with Casa Bowling to fix, come up a fair parking plan for the center. But I cannot get Bowling to agree my fair plan. So I have no choice, then I have to go to the city to ask for help to create, come up a fair parking plan for my plaza. Thank you so much. I'm asking, request the city, please don't delay, because this problem, the parking problem, it has been seven years already. So please, council and the city, and don't delay and try to help to fix the problem for my tenant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ho. We have Gaber, and then we have Tiffany Wang.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilor. Although I live here for the last eight, five years, I've been, love always raised the Asian community, so I go always shop there. Before, I never had a problem, never in years. Now, I always have a problem. Even I have a handicap sticker due to my illness, I can't find a parking. Even I go around and go to different parking, different spot, come around, same people. I go shopping somewhere else, same people. Same thing. I think Councilor Sylvester, he bring the point. What's the meaning of a two-hour parking? Parking is taking turn. At least we take turn. Thank you so much. You know, I ask you and urge you, do something about it, because it's in your hand. At least, we try the two-hour parking, at least. So at least we can have turn, and we can do what we can do at the same time. Thank you so much.
Tiffany Wang, next. And after Tiffany, we have Sunny Kwong.
My name is Tiffany Wang. I love to shop in the King Shopping Center, but right now it's very hard to find a parking. Even I drive free around or fly around, it's still a lot, very hard to find a parking lot. Before, with my family, always like to shop in the supermarket or eat in a restaurant. But right now, when we spend, you know, the time free around or fly around, didn't find a parking. So we have to try another space. So I hope can solve that problem, let us can easy to find a parking, can choose my favorite shopping center. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Next, we have Sunny Kwong. And after Sunny, we have Tony Spitalini.
Hello, good evening. Excuse me. I am a frequent shopper at the King City Plaza Center, and I also noticed the same issue that the previous speakers talked about. The parking has been getting worse. You know, I like to go there and shop at the Manila Market. They get everything I need. It's like a one-stop shop for me. And now I have some time to drive around for 20, 30 minutes, if I'm lucky, to find a spot. And sometimes I get so frustrated, I have to go somewhere else to shop, which I really do not like. And I notice also that the problem has been getting worse and worse over the last few years. And I hope something can be done ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunny. Next is Tony. And after Tony, we have Vicky Wu.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Councilmember Sylvester, you were right on on your points. It's two different issues. One has nothing to do with the other. The variance issue is another issue that can be resolved in a legal manner. The parking issue is in your hands. It's more than just a parking issue, it's an economic issue. As people get frustrated looking for parking places, trying to shop and get their groceries or any of the businesses there, they tend to go other places because they get frustrated, as you heard tonight, people riding around and around looking for spaces. I myself, and when I go up there, it takes me quite a bit to find a parking place to have a meeting or to have lunch or entertain some friends. It's an economic issue for the city. If businesses decide that they're having problems getting customers to frequent their businesses, they're going to start looking for other places where they can have their income grow and keep growing. So the Manila Market's a major economic issue for our city, or for your city. It provides a lot of sales taxes. So does the other people. So I recommend that you move forward to place this in front of you at a hearing to resolve this issue. So not only look at the ability to provide turnover for people that can go in and out to their stores, but also look at the future of how it impacts you economically if you were to lose a significant part of that business in there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Next is Vicky Wu. And after Vicky, we have John Fitzgerald.
Going to the King Plaza is one of the reason me and my family like to go to Daly City. And lots of times when we visit King Plaza, there are no parking spots, and it forces us to go like loops and surrounds King Plaza in search for a parking spot, and that takes a lot of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Next up is John Fitzgerald. And after John, we have John B.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is John Fitzgerald, and I represent DBP Investments. I represent them in litigation with King and with Manila Market. And incidentally, Manila Market and King, I'm sorry, Manila Market and DBP are actively involved in settlement discussions as we speak. The reason why the easement is related to the parking situation is that it was a part of a lot line, a lot split, which provided that the King Bowling, I mean Classic Bowling, would have access to the parking that it wouldn't otherwise have. What happens in court, which will take place on the 21st of November, we're going to trial, a three-day trial before Judge Foyle's, the most experienced trial judge in San Mateo County. He's going to weigh the equities and find out who, what is fair in terms of parking. What the judge will have and what the council does not have, and what I understand, the reason why the Planning Commission wanted to table this, was the judge will have evidence. It'll have data. And to your point, Mr. Sylvester, there's objective and there's subjective. Objective is data, hard science evidence. What is causing the parking problem? The judge will hear that, the judge will make findings, and the judge will be presented with expert witness testimony from experts who are experts in parking, including King's experts. They'll testify. They will testify what the cause of the parking problem is. They will testify what the cause of the parking problem is and what a potential resolution of the parking problem is. Because just to rush to judgment, and I understand, Mr. Sylvester, I understand this has been going on for seven years. I've lived with this case for seven years. We have had interim settlement agreements, we've tried things. And the notion that we have not tried to engage and tried to resolve this thing beyond the city council or the court is, frankly, it's utter nonsense. But you need evidence, the Planning Commission needs evidence, and the court will need evidence. That evidence will be provided to you through the court, through, provided to the Planning Commission. But the thing that's missing, when they say we have a parking plan, is the data to support the parking plan. Because otherwise, a year from now, two years from now, I could guarantee you that we'll be back with a problem with parking. Because the parking may not be just all about, the bowlers may be very little about the parking. The parking may indeed be about employees, where to put the employees. But without that information, without that data, you're operating in a vacuum. And that's why a rushed judgment, I understand. Get this thing done. Get this thing done the very next meeting. But the very next meeting, this council will not be presented with evidence or data or the input from planning, who are the experts in it. To have somebody there to provide, people, I'm not an expert in parking, none of us here.
We have two minutes, we're already done.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next up is John B., and then after John is Matt Devincenzi.
Good evening, I'm Jonathan. I've been, me and my family and I have been shopping at King Plaza for longer than I, for long than I can remember. I have a personal connection to that place. My father celebrated my birth at one of the restaurants there. But it's been very difficult trying to find, been very difficult throughout the years to, you know, enjoy the plaza as I would be able to do the lack of parking and the lack of space maneuvering around the parking lot. So I, I agree with the time parking, so at least everyone have a time to enjoy the plaza within the community. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Matt. And after Matt, we have Manny Cabrera.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Matt Devincenzi, and I'm a Filipino-American, and I'm the manager of Classic Bowling Center. We've been operating in Daly City for almost forty years. We are proud to be a part of Daly City community and believe that we are a community center to many of the residents of Daly City as well as neighboring cities. We have many young children, adults, and seniors that bowl here on a weekly basis. Most of them spending more than two to three hours, dozens of which sent emails to the Planning Commission prior to the October 4th hearing, as well as hundreds of signatures from our concerned bowlers. We recognize that the tenants and the shoppers also have valid concern. I ask that Daly City please hire an independent parking consultant with the expenses shared by both parties equally, so that we can collect current data to understand the needs of all the businesses in the plaza. As a proposal of timed spaces from Tammy Ho would likely put Classic Bowling Center out of business and Daly City will lose its last bowling center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt. Next is Manny Cabrera. And after Manny, we have Paul Lee. Manny? Manny? Paul Lee. And then after Paul, we have Edwin Ho.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember. I would like to bring up a point. Besides the parking, this is a picture of a big semi-truck delivery in front of Bowling, blocking my car, I couldn't get out. This is not, was first time. Every time I go, always a big, they're huge and taking up both links. No one can pass through. I can't back out, I can't go out. Emergency will happen. And then also, there's a lot of parking behind the truck, which we cannot get in because the truck is, the delivery truck is blocking all the time. Okay, this is not the first time, many times. If you go there anytime of the day, you see the truck delivered. They should deliver in the back. There's a, on the side of Bowling, on the left, right side of the entrance. Take a whole pathway. Why can't they park there? It's blocking the filing. If a file happens, file truck cannot get through here. That's the main problem too. And I hope you guys can, you know, help police that. And second thing, I know the bowling's problem, you know, but also a lot of the shoppers, I don't think we take more than two hours to shop, grocery shopping, or eat them some. But bowler, if they have a tournament, it'll be four hours first time. Then back-to-back, they have a back-to-back tournament, that's eight hours. That's, that will have no space for us as a shopper. Okay, and I think I take precedence over our daily necessities in life. It's grocery shopping than a leisure, pleasure bowling. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Edwin Ho. And then after Edwin, we have Hao Chin Wong. Edwin, or...
Hi, good evening, everybody. Then my business is Taiyuan Location and King Plaza. My customer always come back, there's no parking, we have to look for parking. So I hope can solve problem as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Edwin. Next up is Hao Chin Wong. He's not here, okay. Next up is David Leon. And after David, we have Joji Markado.
Hello, I'm David Leon. I like to go to the plaza, King Plaza. I like to enjoy the team some, but too much the parking. I like, I want enjoy the, I enjoy in the shopping. I want easy parking. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Joji Markado. And after Joji, we have James Barrett.
Good evening. My name is Joji Markado. I own a character school at King Plaza Center. One of the challenges my students are facing is finding parking. If they can find parking in the parking lot, they end up parking out in the streets. Classes are only an hour. So when they do park, they leave right after class, and that would free up a parking space. One of the benefits of having a business in a shopping center is ample parking. It's hard to enjoy that benefit when there are several cars parked for a long period of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Joji. Next is James Barrett. After James, we have Mark Hudak. Hudak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm James Barrett, and I represent Manila Oriental Market, which is the anchor tenant for the shopping center. And part of the submission that went through Planning was the loading and unloading of delivery trucks in the upper parking lot, which if you've read through, you'll see that that's actually part of the submission. And after the Planning Commission came out with their recommendations for, for the council, I worked with the attorneys for DBP Investment. And we're in the process right now, working out an arrangement in writing that we'd like to be able to submit to Planning prior to any next council meeting. So that you can see that we've had that agreement, which actually will solidify one issue out of this submission. And I'd like the city council to take the opportunity to review that from Planning. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Next is Mark. And then after Mark, we have Simon Wu.
Members of the council, good evening, or maybe good morning at this point. Mark Hudak, I represent DBP. Several of the owners are here, along with my parking consultant, who is on the Zoom. At least, I hope he's still there. Look, the city's being pushed to approve zoning amendments and a parking management plan. But what do you really know about that parking management plan? It has more questions than answers, starting with, who prepared it? No one signed it. If it was professionally prepared, there should be an engineer's signature and stamp. But that's not there. Second, what data supports it? Is it current data? Does it have parking counts? Does it know the number of employees? Does it know where they're going to park? None of that data was submitted with the application. What assumptions does that plan make about the bowlers? Do they need two hours or three hours or more? Because if you pass a management plan that doesn't support the bowlers, they're going to be gone. What we do know about the parking plan is that it allows one hundred percent of shopping center customers to park anywhere they want on the site. But more than fifty percent of the parking spaces will be off-limits to bowlers, and that'll be a disaster. And unfortunately, we can't go through a trial period because if this is instituted for six months and it doesn't work, the leagues will be gone and the bowling center will be out of business. What's the right thing to do? From the start, I've said the city should have its own independent parking consultant, get current parking counts, get current parking or employee counts, get professional recommendations, and come forward with a parking plan that everybody can agree on. Not one that favors the shopping center or one that favors the bowling center, one that's fair to everyone. But that's not this parking plan. It's your responsibility to get the right advice and the right data. Thank you for your time tonight. I know it's been a long night for you.
Thank you, Mark. Next is Simon Wu. And after Simon, we have Ji Ming Wong.
Good evening, my name is Simon. We like to shop at the shopping and the King Plaza shopping mall. And famous restaurant over there. We usually shop like three or four times a week. And right now, we don't come that much over there. And the main thing is that the hard to looking for the parking. The second thing is that the, whatever the day or the evening, sometimes the weekend, go maybe twenty minutes, fifty minutes, you can, you can find a parking. So I hope the city council and the mayor to fix those problem for the people over there. I think right now, they lose a lot of customer over there right now. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, Simon. Ji Ming Wong. And after Ji Ming Wong, we have Steven Soon. Ji Ming's not here. Do we have Steven here? After Steven, we have Jeremy Quadi. And then after that, we'll pass it to staff.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, all the council members. Thank you for sticking around for this long, a long night. So the parking situation at King Plaza. So my mother's like in the nineties, and she's not able to really go out to her favorite place, restaurants, shops over there. But more importantly, you mentioned there's three hundred and twenty-six parking spots. And there are sixty lanes at Classic Bowls, four per lane. We have two hundred and forty cars because they all come with their equipment. So in addition, they have the arcade, they have the cafe, they have the pro shop. It actually, you know, can occupy the whole entire parking lot. We do have a situation, you know, let's not kick this can, you know, further. We have to address that and be, you know, be fair to an owner. And Daly City is built out on diversity. So we have a plaza that produce all these shops that caters to the diversity. But if one particular business actually take over the entire parking situation, it will be devastating to this particular plaza, which is very, very important for Asian community. So therefore, I urge you to really make your decision quicker, as quick as you can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steven. Next is Jeremy Quadi. Jeremy? Let's see, Jeremy, I'll pass it over to staff.
Nine hands raised.
If I may, just through the mayor, I believe the city clerk does have a couple cards that were handwritten. I don't know if you want to read it into the record.
Oh, yeah. All right.
I didn't want to let them down, so I thank you for your indulgence. Beth Santiago writes, "I am a resident here in Daly City. My concern is the parking at King Plaza shopping here is too terrible. Thank you. My name is Manny Cabrera. I live in, I live in Daly City since nineteen eighty-nine. And for the past twenty years, I've been shopping at King Plaza. But by Manila Oriental, for the past ten years, parking is so terrible. Please do something. Thank you and God bless. As a resident of Daly City for over two decades, I've been shopping a lot at King Plaza, King Drive Plaza, and parking is always a pain, especially when one is in a rush. We need help for the authorities to make improvement on this matter to help the residents be happy and not be stressed out. We thank you. We're thankful for your fair attention in this matter, fair parking." And then this just says, "Fair parking, rightful property, parking owner." Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Now we're passing it over to Leilani.
Okay, Mayor, now we have twelve hands raised. Last called speaker, Edwin. First speaker, Jason.
Hello?
Hi, Jason, we can hear you.
All right. Hi, my name is Jason Chang, and I'm actually going to be translating for my grandfather, who is Raymond Chang. Yeah? So basically what he said was that it's always hard to find parking for shopping, for groceries or going to eat, especially on the weekends. Yeah? He's, he, he wonders if, he always wonders why there's so many cars. He wonders if it's parties at the restaurant or bowling. He, he wonders if they limit the time people park. He believes it will be hard, and it's been like this for too long. He, he, when he goes, he's, he's gone to Manila Market for many years. And as a senior, when he parks far, it's very difficult for him to walk the distance. So he says that, he hopes that they can make it this, this in today. And since it's already the second meeting, he says he can't wait since he's still old. All right, thank you, that's all.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Nancy.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Nancy. We can hear you, Nancy.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council. I live two minutes from the shopping center in Daly City, and I've been going to the center for more than 20 years. The center has been a big part of Daly City life. Many of us in the community go to the market, bowl at the bowling alley, patronize the many restaurants and other establishments. As a result, it is very clear that there is a very big parking problem there. Everyone knows it's a problem. At the planning commission meeting, every patron and tenant came out to acknowledge the problem. We heard from the supermarket, the restaurants, the laundromat, karate studio, the bowling alley, everyone. No one disagrees that it's a problem and that it needs to be addressed. So if that's the case, we really should do something about this now. It's been long overdue. The planning commission staff did a very thorough analysis and put together a proposal to address this issue. And I understand, I even understand a professional consultant was, a parking consultant was used. So it was extremely frustrating when even after all that and what everyone came out to talk about, the planning commission completely dismissed everyone's comments and decided to punt on the issue. That is the reason why I stayed up so late to be here today. It just irked me so much that I had to make sure to come today to say something, because that was just absolutely unacceptable. The residents of Daly City came to the meeting to bring up a problem to be solved, but instead, the planning commission just basically said they didn't care about everyone's complaints and that they weren't going to do anything about it. So let me recap. One, everyone knows it's a problem. Two, everyone agrees something needs to be done. And three, the city has spent a lot of time evaluating this issue and put together a very well-thought-out solution, taking into consideration everyone's needs. So it seems abundantly clear to me that we really have no reason to put off addressing this problem anymore, and the city should just decide what is fair for the community now and not wait any longer, or even wait for litigation that may or may not happen or ever even get resolved. We cannot listen to any more excuses at this point. This is a city matter, and the city needs to resolve it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Jay.
Hello, my name is Jay. I've been going to King Plaza for well over just about 20 years now. I found that I can pretty much no longer bear waiting in the parking lot. Oftentimes, 10, 15-minute wait, using up gas. Sometimes, I can't even go there with my girlfriend and get star bread. That's one of her favorite things, and the wait can become so unbearable. I often find myself going other places. I do also want to agree with the speaker that was before me regarding staying up pretty late. I work very early morning hours, but I have to be up in about four hours. And given what she was saying about what happened on the last meeting, so I agree with her. But the parking situation definitely needs to be taken care of. Everybody is well aware of it, that it is a problem. And how to go about it, I don't know, but we definitely need to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Paula.
Paula, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi. So in a previous meeting, we had a discussion about the parking situation at King Plaza. A proposal was presented in response to a long, long-going parking issue that has been plaguing King Plaza. The proposal was reasonable, non-biased, and research-based by a reputable company. But instead of addressing the issue, the proposal was dismissed, saying that it would be tabled until later date. I don't feel that it's fair to the residents that are frequent patrons of the plaza. I myself enjoy the restaurants, Manila grocery shopping, and bowling entertainment. However, the parking difficulties at King Plaza have become tremendously and increasingly difficult in the past decade. Sometimes, I have to go somewhere else, because I would spend so much time circulating the parking lot for a spot, sometimes for an hour, and it's just not ideal when I have three young children in the backseat. So I was quite excited when this proposal was presented in a previous meeting, thinking that the city, that this issue would at last have some type of resolution. I was quite disappointed when the issue was tabled. I felt so deflated. Why let a well-known problem persist when something can be done by the city right now? Why delay it further when a proper proposal was presented? My mind is boggled. I'm hearing that things were tried. It sounds like this plan is the only proposed solution so far. And in response to some comments earlier, even we have to come back later in a few years. At least right now, we have a start. We have a start where we can finally begin tackling the problem. I hear that classic bowls fear they will be out of business. There's still unlimited parking available. Now, the question is, will this be perfect? To be honest, has anyone here ever encountered the most perfect plan? This is at least a start, and I sincerely hope the city council may reconsider the proposal that clearly and fairly addresses the ongoing parking issue at King Plaza. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Enrique.
Good evening, City Council. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I thank you guys for your time. I just wanted to share tonight, just because I've been a resident of Daly City, and I've lived pretty much like a couple blocks from King Plaza my whole life. I pretty much grew up in that place, and I've had, I've celebrated so many birthdays and family occasions. But I would say over the last years, as I've grown, and of course, now I'm a father and caretaker to my grandmother, it's pretty much become impossible to even be a patron of any of those businesses anymore, which has pretty much changed a lot of our family dynamic, just because whenever, and my grandma has shopped there for, I would say, over 20 years. And nowadays, even with the disability plaque that she has, we can't find parking. There's been times where I would go in the morning and come back in the afternoon, and I would see the same vehicles parked in the same place. So it's just, I hope that we can come to a resolution, and that's why I stayed up so late, even though, of course, I have work in the morning. I just plead that this can change, so that we can go back and, of course, just to the way things were and be able to take advantage and be good patrons and be residents of Daly City, which we've been our entire lives, so that these things could change. So I just plead you guys that we can make a decision. So thank you so much. You guys have a good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Peter.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Yes, I'd like to address the parking issue that we have at King Plaza. I've been a long-term resident of Daly City for probably the last 35 years, and I've actually bowled at the bowling center, and I've done league, and I've done tournaments there, and frequently gone to the restaurants in King Plaza. One of the issues that I've been seeing over the last probably five, six years is the parking has definitely gotten worse on there. And I'm not sure if it is a bowling, or if it's King Plaza. All I know is that there should be some type of time limit on the parking within that center. The city does it everywhere else in Daly City. They have metered parkings. I think a councilman said it best earlier, where the meters or the allocated times are for turnover. I think that is what's needed over at King Plaza. I think it's fair to the customers. I don't think it's fair for one business to take all the parking over the other businesses. I mean, all businesses should be judged fairly, and everyone there is in support of small businesses, as the city was talking about earlier. So in order for us to do this, I think the city needs to make a decision to go to move forward with this, so we can actually get timed parking in King Plaza. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Iam.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, or rather, good morning. I apologize for failing to have changed my Zoom name beforehand. I'd just like to formally state that I'm in favor of the timed parking. As someone who goes out to eat a lot, timed parking is very necessary, especially when the parking is free. When there's a time limit, sorry, when there's a limited number of parking spaces, people take advantage of the lack of the time limit. And in this particular plaza, the parking spaces fill up very quickly, and it's very easy for people to get away with parking their cars and allowing it to occupy the same spot for several hours, leaving no space for anyone else to come. It's really discouraging, especially for people like me, because I don't want to go to a place where I anticipate having no parking or knowing that parking will be difficult. Timed parking is actually quite common in cities these days, and the only places that don't really have timed parking are places that have an abundant number of spots. And this isn't one of those places. I eat around the Bay Area a lot, and I love dining at places like Brilliant Game, and San Mateo, and Redwood City, et cetera, and I eat there more often, because I know it's not an inconvenience to go there. They have timed parking, which means even during peak hours, when it's packed, I know I'll find somebody who's going to leave, and the reason they're leaving is because they have a time limit. So when I dine in other cities with my colleagues or friends, we don't worry about parking. But I don't go to this plaza anymore, especially with large groups of people, because we know there won't be any parking. So with timed parking, it's not only great for customers, but it's great for the businesses, because it increases turnover, and it increases the number of people that can visit. I used to come to this plaza often with my friends in the evenings for food, or boba, or with my family for food on Sunday mornings and afternoons, and it'd always be so hard to find parking that we just eventually stopped going. There's so many food places within driving distance where we could eat together with less hassle for parking that it wasn't worth going anymore. But I would happily return if the parking issue could be resolved. So, long story short, I think timed parking would be really beneficial. It's a modern and more efficient option for parking, and it's great for both customers like myself and the establishments there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Chloe.
Hello, my name is Chloe. I've had difficult times going to King Plaza, because I can't find parking. As much as I would like to shop at Manila Oriental Market for groceries, I find myself going to other shopping centers instead, since it's easier to find parking. I would love to continue to shop at King Plaza, since it's closer to where I live, and it would be much more convenient. So I really hope that the council this evening can decide on what would be fair for the community and not a judge. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Anthony.
Hi, good morning, council members, and to all who are present and listening in. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, I did want to address my issues regarding the King Plaza parking lot issues and being able to find a parking. My wife and I have two young children, and we frequent establishments inside of King Plaza on a weekly basis, because our family lives close by. And it's something that we do, you know, as a family. But it's been really hard for me to recommend visiting King Plaza with the whole family, especially after Mass, because it's hard for everyone to find a parking spot. So I don't understand why, but the oversaturation of parking in their cars don't really line up with the occupancies that we observe inside of the stores. So, I mean, to me, I'm definitely in favor of a timed parking spot. Like I heard earlier today, people were saying two hours. Two hours is an ample amount of time to be able to shop and eat and go bowling and spend time with the family. And I love taking my kids there, just because we're able to eat and the kids are able to get dessert and, you know, star bread. And we also could hit up the grocery store and get spices that I'm not able to get at a Vons or a Target. And so it would be nice for me to be able to recommend family meetings again. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Kathy.
Hi there, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. I gotta say, I'm inspired by the passion of all the community members here tonight, showing up, staying late to really speak about this topic. I've kind of been doing a little tally myself, and for some data, I've got like 21, really speaking in favor of a parking plan resolution, and three that really wants to table and kind of let a judge decide for us. My name is Kathy Nguyen. I have called Daly City home for a few decades now, from my youth, when I used to go to Lingnam and get that late-night noodle soup back when they were on Geller, to now where my husband and I have decided to raise our young family. I am a lifelong customer of the shopping center. With its many different businesses, from the Manila supermarket to a wide range of great restaurants and bakeries, to the beauty salons, the dojo, the laundromat, it has everything that this diverse community needs. And speaking of community needs, so many of the essential businesses in this plaza donate to local charities, released stuff up, and donated senior meals, especially during the pandemic. So it really just really, you know, makes me feel like I really want to be able to support them in their businesses. Over the years, the parking has been a challenge, as everyone has voiced, and it has, I feel like it's gotten worse. When I need to go pick up some star bread for like a weekend party, get-together, or roast up for dinner, it is very difficult to find parking, and half the time, I find myself leaving. So I really appreciate that everyone's taking so much time to address this issue. We must consider the impact of the poor parking situation on all of these family-owned businesses. Esteemed members of City Council, please, I implore you to decide what is best for this neighborhood, the community, and the small businesses, and determine resolution on this matter tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have last called Speaker Edwin.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hi, good morning, Mayor and members of the council. Thanks for allowing me to speak about the parking situation at King Plaza. So I've been going to King Plaza for years, and there's always been an issue with parking. It's always cramped and full. Parking is the first thing I consider when I'm going somewhere. So with the parking issue, I would much rather consider other options instead of waiting and fighting for my parking spot. So hopefully, we can get this resolved soon. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Leilani. Okay, so we came to three options, I believe. So one is referring it back to planning. Number two... For number two.
Number two, Mr. Mayor, is to accept planning's decision, to table it.
And then number three is set time, place.
For public hearing.
For public hearing.
Public hearing.
That sounds right.
Go ahead, Michael.
If I may make a...
Go ahead, I count all numbers together.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you know, I'm an advocate, and I'd like to make that motion that we bring this back before public hearing.
Sick.
Tonight, I've heard a barrage of comments from the community. And I have to thank, first of all, staff, because I read your report, all 114 pages. And what I have to say, it was unbiased. I heard from both sides. So thank you, staff, for that. I'd like to thank the community for staying up with us so late to be here, and that's a testament as to your passion and how you feel about King Plaza. In addition to hearing from the community, I've heard from attorneys in this matter, and information has been very, very compelling, very compelling. Some information I did not know. But the question I have, why did everybody come out tonight? What happened six months ago? What happened eight months ago? I have been following this issue and planning, and I saw the requirements put on to Ms. Tammy Ho. You need to find a place for the employees to park. Well, that's the data you're looking for, and pardon me, I think there was 63 or 83 spots for employees. I didn't make mention about that. So that has been considered. When the folks go to court, I would hope that the judge takes the following in consideration. You talk about, things have changed. Things do change. That land parcel is not getting any bigger. And taking that into account, there's going to be a problem. Part also that the judge should also consider, what has changed in the community? Has Daly City got an increase in population? Has more businesses moved into King Plaza? And the bowling alley, folks need a place to go. I get it. But what has changed about that bowling alley? What has changed is we lost, or one of our bowling alleys in Daly City, Sarah Bowe, closed. So when you talk, where are they going to go? They're going to go down to Belmont and Bowl? No, they're going to go to Daly City, because that was closed. So how do you address that? I've heard that there may be a change in profitability. Well, what was the profit like before you got the folks from Sarah Bowe? Why should an owner give up all of the parking spaces, or 50%, 60%, or 70% to help one particular tenant? If I were a judge, I'd say, well, what's the square footage of every building on that piece of property? If I were a judge, I'd say, well, what's the square footage of every building on that piece of property? And you take that square footage, you come up with a formula, this is how many parking spots you get. But I guess that's too, that's too easy. So I made mention about the time. I made mention about the employees, the entire lot to which Ms. Ho owns. I made mention by, why come today? Because you had to. We are now putting the hammer down. And I hope my colleagues will continue this so that we don't delay any further. I thank you all. Thank you for all for listening to me. And those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Any other comments from my colleagues?
Mr. Mayor, in regards to your motion, Councilmember Sylvester, did you put a date on that?
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. I think this is a collaborative effort, and if you have a recommendation, I'd be more than welcome to entertain it.
I thought we were doing the next one.
November 14.
To Madam City Attorney, is that possible?
Yes, we can set the date today for the November 14th public hearing for noticing.
Thank you. So amendment to the motion based upon my colleague, Councilmember Manalo. I'd like to amend that motion and create a motion to bring this matter back before council set a date and time of November 14th.
Will that be the last time we have to hear it too? That's it, right?
Well, Councilmember Deji Yavani, before I can entertain any of your comments, we must have a second before we proceed.
Oh, second.
Second? Okay, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, for further discussion.
It's late, I'm sorry. It's late.
What was your question, Councilmember Deji Yavani?
It's okay. I just want to make sure that that's it, right, Rose? That's it. Once we have the public hearing, that's it. We can make a decision.
You can make a decision at that hearing, but I can't guarantee if that's it.
Yeah, that's okay, I'm sorry.
Rose, do we...
Second.
After the second, do we do a roll call vote?
Yes.
That's okay. Thank you, Rose.
Yes.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
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 Aye. Have a set date time for November 14th. Moving on to appointments, the board commission membership committee appointments. Are there any commission membership appointments?
Good job.
Seeing none. Item number 17, council committee reports. Are there any council committee reports? Seeing none. To item 18, city council reports.
Just a real quick one. I know it's late for everybody, just want to say, even though it's going into the second day, happy Diwali, which brings love, light, and happiness. It's an Indian tradition, and we have a lot of those people in our community. They celebrate it. I know it's pretty late for everybody, so I'll save any other reports. Thank you.
Are there any other city council reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On last Friday, I went to the Housing Leadership Day in San Mateo County at the Chan Zuckerberg Institute. There were several topics such as regional financing for housing and also reimagining housing through arts by lyrical opposition. I thought it was a well-done summit in regards to housing and also looking at ways to finance deeper affordability in low-income housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Are there any other council committee reports? I have one. I've been asked by many folks in the public about the use of city vehicles. And I just want to ask staff about direction about that, in terms of the use of city vehicles. I guess there's been use of city vehicles that were not used for city business. And there was reports of one of our colleagues not being able to, not reporting out or legal use of vehicles. And I've been having different residents that have came up to me in recent weeks. And I just want to know how we can discuss that and create some sort of accountability.
Since July, I've been, there was a public records request on the subject, and I've kept council informed of exactly what it was, that my responsibility was. And I looked into it, and obviously, there was a council member that the usage of the vehicle came into question, not only on a council meeting, but also in public records requests through emails. And I looked into the policy on how that's supposed to be addressed. And over time, I was recently able to, well, I was told that I wasn't going to get the keys and be able to put the pool vehicle back into service. But it just so happens that it was due for service, so now it's in for service as we speak. And when it's done, it'll go back into the pool, and the policy will be followed, and I'll be attempting to enforce that.
I guess...
And I don't know how much, if this is the proper forum, but I'm happy to discuss everything that I've been able to discover through the public records requests.
I guess I would like to further discuss, just to set precedence for future use of city vehicles and maybe agendize it for a next council meeting? If that can be done.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think we should have a policy. I'm surprised that we sort of didn't really have one or it wasn't clear. And so I fully support the idea of us making sure we have policy in place and that it is followed.
Other city council or can we...
Staff will follow that direction.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I have, I think, I think we were supposed to report this out. I'm going to turn to Rose about, people have been asking about the status of the city manager recruitment. Can you report out on what the status is?
Sure. At this point, we have gone through the recruitment, sorry, we have gone through the recruitment process. But given the timing and the number of applicants that we did receive, the city council has decided to stall the recruitment at this point and will be going back out for recruitment starting next year in January.
And so just to be clear, so the interim appointment process?
Yes, so currently, we do have an interim city manager, Mr. Tom Picalati, who will maintain his role as the interim city manager until the city council does begin their recruitment again.
Thank you.
Are there any other reports from my colleagues? If not, we'll move it on to number 19, staff reports. Okay, so moving down to adjournments, I know... Okay, I think I have it here. So we're going down to adjournment. We have one adjournment to D'Ron Zhang, who's the grandfather of Officer Alex Zhang. Are there any other adjournment memories that we want to provide? Seeing none, if we could offer a moment of silence? Thank you, everyone, for staying up this late. And we'll see you at the next council meeting in November 14th. Thank you, everyone, for everybody's hard work.
Good job, Mr. Mayor.